Aloha, everyone. Welcome. The November regular meeting of the Kailua Neighborhood Board is called to order. Since this is a hybrid meeting, first order of business is roll call. Josiah Akau. Travis Council. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laea. Present. Jade Lau. Present. Mike Lee. Levani Lipton. Carol Miyashiro.
Present remotely.
Present remotely. Kate Ryder. Present. Claudine Tomasa.
Present remotely.
Present remotely. Steve Trecker. Present. Evan Weber. Gary Weller.
Remotely present.
Present remotely. John White.
Present, live from San Island.
Present remotely. Donna Wong. Present. Jeff Suckernick.
Present remotely.
Present remotely. And I am here. All right, we have a forum with six members in person and five members remotely. Forum of 11. Next order of business are announcements. The Lanikai Woes Day, which will be celebrating 100 years of Lanikai. The 56th Annual Woes Day will be on New Year's Day, January 1st, and include an 8:00 AM race, a 9:00 AM parade, and live music and breakfast between 9:00 and 11:00. Our next order of business. Are there any other announcements? Okay, next order of business is a board vacancy. This is for the term ending June 30th, 2025, for Sub District 2, which is Enchanted Lake. Board members may nominate candidates to fill the vacancy. Proof of residency is required, and candidates may speak for three minutes prior to the board voting. Are there any nominations for the board vacancy? Kate Ryder.
I'd like to nominate Keala Morrell.
Okay, Keala Morrell is nominated. Is there a second? Seconded by Steve Trecker. Are there any other nominations? Okay, Keala. Could you come up and introduce yourself? Just a little bit about you and your interest in joining the board. Microphone's right here.
Aloha, I'm Keala Morrell. I was born and raised in Kailua, the iliina of Kapa Kapa, right on the side of the Fish Pond Kalipulu. I'm a teacher. I teach kindergarten through sixth grade special education over at Akaki Elementary School. I've taught at a bunch of different schools around Kailua. I think I was motivated to come tonight based off of the words of the people that I love and trust in this community. My friends, my sister, told me about the vacancy and that I should come check it out. So I'm here today mostly to learn and to just offer whatever service I can provide you all in working alongside you. I love Kailua. I love being from Kailua. And so, any way I can give back to this community, I'm always here.
All right, well mahalo for your interest in joining the board. We're going to open it up to see if any members have any questions. And the other thing is, we'll need to, Spencer Johnson will need to take a look at your driver's license to verify your residency location. So we'll do questions first. Any questions? Donna Wong.
Yes, hi. Do you have any particular interests that you would like to pursue or look at as a board member?
Oh, I think specifically I'm kind of oriented probably towards like, because of my background education, any sort of environmental impacts are also kind of important to me and my family. I don't have anything specifically that I've noticed from your agendas that like calls to my heart. But I'm happy to learn, and I'm more than welcome to any.
Another question that I always ask. Do you support having vacation resident, short-term vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods?
Oh, that's a near and dear one to me. So, I grew up in Kailua, obviously went to school on the mainland and then came back. And one of my biggest concerns was whether or not I'd be able to live here. I think specifically being from Kailua and being a young person here, it's hard to see housing not be available for us. So, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, this board has consistently voted against short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. So
Great news, guys.
At the right place.
Jade Lau.
If there was one thing in Kailua that you could change, what would it be? Anything. If there was one thing in Kailua you could change, what would that be? And why?
I think as like a Hawaiian from Kailua, I would love to see that expressed more. I think our, I'm a little whitewashed sometimes. It's told that it's not filled with kona kamaaliki, and it is. So, that's something I wish was different.
Levani Lipton.
Aloha. My question is, based on maybe some conversations that you've had with your ohana and your neighbors and your colleagues, is there a specific issue here, like in Kailua, that you would like to lift up or champion? What is something that, even though you said you're here and you're willing to learn, is there something that just really resonates based on your conversations with your ohana and those who are near and dear to you?
Yeah, I think a big one for my age demographic right now is housing. Making sure there's a way for people our age to live here. I think in my work life, a big part of it is consistent leadership. I don't know if those are things that like we work on in neighborhood boards. I'm sure I'll learn. But those are definitely two things that come up a lot in my experience.
Are there any other questions online? Okay. If we could just verify your address, I think it's, if you have a driver's license or?
You know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we're on pause for just a moment. Representative Jill Takuta is with us for tonight's meeting from Washington where it's currently 1:11 AM. And unless there are any objections, I would propose that we receive Representative Takuta's report immediately after HPD and HFD reports. No objections. Well, we're not supposed to delay HPD/HFD. They might have important calls. Okay. Address is verified. Call for the motion. All in favor of Keala Morrell filling the existing vacancy. Please say aye, opposed, say nay. Josiah Akau. Travis Council. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laea. Aye. Jade Lau. Aye. Mike Lee. Levani Lipton. Aye. Carol Miyashiro.
Aye.
Aye. Kate Ryder. Aye. Claudine Tomasa.
Aye.
Aye. Steve Trecker. Aye. Evan Weber. Aye. Gary Weller.
She's very energetic. Aye.
Aye. John White.
Aye.
Aye. Donna Wong. Aye. Jeff Suckernick.
Absolutely, aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. All right, it's unanimous. 13 votes in favor. Keala, congratulations as our newest board member. We're going to take, actually, can you administer the oath while we move on? Okay. Okay, now we need to administer the oath of office and have a seat at the big table.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the City and County of Honolulu, the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan, and I will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which I have been elected.
Hey, congratulations. Next order of business are HPD and HFD reports. Representative from Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District 4 Community Policing Team. The stats for the month of October were for motor vehicle thefts, there were two versus one the previous month. For burglaries, there were five in October versus eight the previous month. For thefts, there were 37 last month versus 34 the previous month. For U M Vs, car break-ins, there were nine last month versus five the previous month. For robberies, there were zero in October versus one the previous month. And then I also have the motor vehicle accident stats. So there were three major motor vehicle accidents in October. One was a critical, which was a motorcyclist. They went critical to the hospital. And that's all I have for the stats. I can take any questions or comments or concerns?
Questions tonight for HPD. Online? Gary Weller.
Hi. I asked at the last meeting, I negotiated with Officer Au about having a coffee with cops over at Akaki Starbucks, and I still haven't heard an answer back yet. The community would really like to have one of those at the.
Okay, yeah, so my unit's the one that put those on. I don't know where our next one is. We've had several at Akaki previously, and I'm sure we can do another one there. I have to look at when our next one is. We should be having one sometime this month. And we posted it on our outdoor website, the HPD Outdoor. So if you check that, you can see when our coffee with the cops are.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes.
Claudine Tomasa.
Hi, I did not raise my hand.
Carol Miyashiro.
Hi, yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. I've had the opportunity to work with the members of our community policing team and in particular Officer Jared Atkins. And they're really great. They're very responsive. They're very, working very hard. They're very understaffed, and yet they're doing so much for the community. But I just learned that our own Officer Jared Atkins was named HPD's Officer of the Year for 2023. So, so proud that he's in Kailua, and again, appreciate so much all that he's been doing. And I just wanted to give him the shout out tonight. Thank you so much.
You, appreciate it.
That is terrific. Congratulations, Officer Atkins. Well done.
Thank you.
Other questions for HPD tonight? All right, well, thank you very much for being with us. And again, congratulations, Officer of the Year.
Jared.
John White.
Thank you, Chair. I grew up with Jared. Congrats, brother. You deserve it, brother.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
I know in the past, we were talking about Kailua Beach Park, and there was nuisance there, and people were complaining about homeless people making trouble. Has there been a increase, decrease, or is there still a status quo with that complaint? As far as people getting harassed while in the park, day or night? And is there a difference on the day or night?
Yeah, so we did a little more patrols in the area. We haven't been getting any complaints about harassment or so, but we still have received our longstanding complaint of the one tent in the park and homeless sleeping at the pavilion area. So, I mean, we went there today. We're going to go back tomorrow, and we're going to keep following up on this complaint, but as far as that's concerned, there's no park closure in Kailua Beach. So they can kind of, you know, the pavilion's open 24/7, so they can kind of stay there as long as they don't put up a tent or violate any of the park rules, you know, like drinking in the park or an animal or something like that. So as far as the pavilion area and the complaint of that one tent, that's kind of close to the Lanikai side. There's not too much we can do as of right now, besides sometimes they bring an animal into the park, stuff like that.
Okay, copy that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Jax.
Kate Ryder.
Just as a follow-up question to that, though, what does constitute a tent, then? Because I understand that having a tent up overnight and people sleeping in the park counts as camping, according to the law, and that's the reason that we were able to keep the park hours to be open 24/7 is because there was a law, and so I'm a little confused because there has been a tent tense up and people sleeping there overnight, and I thought that was part of the law.
Yeah, so the tent I'm referring to is a pile of tent, you know, tents considered a roof with walls around it. So this particular one doesn't have a wall around it. Yes, but people, if they're sleeping under it, it can constitute camping. It kind of depends on certain officers see it different ways, but it can be, but most officers tend to think of it as camping would be a tent with walls around it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have what appear to be contradictory definitions of camping from the Department of Parks and Recreation and and Honolulu Police Department. And the published ROH gives a very clear definition. But we are not all aligned on that definition. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. I'm Captain Danny Laurel, and I'm working at the Kailua Fire Station for the day. Some information requested last month regarding emergency notification. The response we got was, understanding how you will be alerted to urgent emergency situations and where to go before, during, and after disasters, or other official vetted information is a critical part of being prepared. Learn more about public alert and warning systems, how to be prepared, and sign up for notifications through the resources provided by the following. The City and County of Honolulu, Department of Emergency Management, the State of Hawaii, Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, National Weather Service, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and ready.gov. And I apologize, but we did not receive the statistics for the month of October. We'll get those at our next meeting. Our fire safety tip for the month is holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third, both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you are cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check it frequently. If you want to fry turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, an air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. Are there any questions or concerns this?
Questions for Captain Laurel, HFD? Online? All right, mahalo. Okay, next, we are very honored tonight to have with us Representative Jill Takuta. It's 1:25 AM in Washington DC, and there are a lot of important things going on in the nation and in the world, so we're very grateful to share your time with us this evening. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Loud and clear.
Very good. I apologize for my informal dress. You are right. Right after this, I will be going to bed and waking up in a few hours to continue our work and, you know, really appreciate the chance to be able to just come and do my report somewhat in person for all of you. Great to see so many familiar faces, both online and I believe right there with you at Kailua District Park as well. Just a quick run-through, hopefully you did receive our report, our November report to the community that should have been circulated from our office. If not, we'll make sure that it does, in fact, get to you. A couple of highlights that have been going on for the last few weeks. We've been very busy. Unfortunately, it's meant that we have taken out about a month of our in-district work period when we were supposed to be home, connecting with community, doing town halls, because we have been busy, first, electing a speaker. That took us quite some time, unfortunately, to be able to do that. As you know, we did elect Speaker Johnson last week. We are now in session for the next two weeks, which should have been a district work period to take up the work as we head towards another critical deadline for all of us, which is November 17th. We were able to pass the continuing resolution to keep the wheels of government turning, you know, a few weeks ago, but unfortunately, now we are staring down that deadline again in order to make sure that funding does not stop for critical services, food money for everyone from Arkeki to Kapuna, making sure that our workers are not furloughed and essential employees are not forced to work without pay. We're going to have to, you know, be looking at extending that continuing resolution by November 17th. Right now, it is looking a bit tricky, given the current leadership that we have in Congress, but I can assure you, everyone wants to make sure that government stays open for business and serving the public. For us, it's about making sure that essential services and supports like SNAP programs, our WIC feeding programs for, you know, our women and children do not get caught in the process, all things that have been on the chopping block in the past when we've considered continuing resolutions. So please look out for that date coming up on November 17th, and let's hope that we will be successful in passing a longer continuing resolution so that we are able to keep government open for business and serving the public. I can assure you that the, you know, the impacts of even a short-term shutdown of government, let alone a long-term one, would have dire consequences on our entire community. To kind of understand the specifics of how it would hit Hawaii, we do have it on our website that you can pull up to see what a shutdown would mean for our congressional district and for the people of Hawaii as a whole. You know, one of the things that have been talked about from a budget standpoint today came to a head on the floors of Congress. It was the funding bill for Israel, probably something that you've been seeing and tracking on the news. As you may know, the Biden administration as well as the United States Senate has really been trying to push forward a collective package of aid for Israel, for Ukraine, for the southern border, as well as the Indo-Pacific and Taiwan. Also taking a look at other domestic, you know, disaster priorities, as well as one bundled package the Biden administration putting forth, $150 billion request. The Senate, again, also reinforcing that aid to Israel should be hand-in-hand with aid to Ukraine. You know, unfortunately, under this new leadership, they have put down a singular proposal just for Israel, and unfortunately, they've tied it to equal parts of a cut to the IRS, which most people might think might be a great thing, but unfortunately, if you cut $14 billion from the agency that brings in tax revenue and goes at tax cheats, you actually add more to the deficit. So it's quite counterintuitive, but unfortunately, that did pass the House floor today, where we expect it to not survive the Senate as it passes over there. So again, we are a bit in gridlock even as it comes to supporting, you know, our allies in Israel. To be noted as well, the bill that was put forward today did not include humanitarian aid, which was also a deal breaker for many of us in looking at that particular measure. So those deliberations will continue as well. Before I forget, I did also want to mention, this should be on the community report that you're receiving. Because we've had such a difficult time knowing when we get home, the calendar has been in flux literally for the last three months. We will be doing a district-wide virtual town hall on November 15th. So right in the middle of what might be a very chaotic week where we're trying desperately not to close down government, I'll be tuning in again from DC. Thanks to daylight savings, it'll be a little earlier for me than it is right now, but would love to have all of you join us and help spread the word. So that will be 5:30 PM Hawaii Standard Time on November 15th. Please register and participate if you can. We would love to be able to update you on what's going on in DC and be able to answer questions and concerns that all of you have as well. So please tune in for that and expect more of these kinds of virtual town halls, talk stories, round tables. Ideally, I'd love to do them at home in person, but given just the changes in schedule, I just want to make sure I can connect with our constituents. One other last highlight before I open up for any questions that you folks may have. November today, we kicked off Rural Health Month, National Rural Health Month. As some of you may know, I am the co-lead of the Congressional Rural Health Caucus. It's a bipartisan caucus made up of both Democrats and Republicans. Right now, we have over 45 members strong. We really focus on making sure that our rural and remote communities, like all of our communities in Hawaii, have access to healthcare and mental health services that they need. And so today, we had a great conversation with Secretary Becerra, Department of Health and Human Services, to talk about why rural health matters and how we need to increase. and how we need to increase access for all of our communities and our constituents. So looking forward to an entire month where we again focus, you know, the spotlight on the struggles, but the opportunities that rural communities have in terms of healthcare and for me, mental health access. That's a really big one as well. So with that chair, and I could speak forever, but I don't want to take up all your time, open to any questions that you may have. And please also at any point in time, contact our office if we can assist you with any questions, any other types of casework or issues that you may have, so.
Mahalo, are you open for any questions?
Yep, can definitely take questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Representative Takuta? Donna Wong.
Hi. I'm Donna, Chair of the Navy's 2018 Report to Cut Down All the Ironwoods at Bellows.
I am not as familiar with that, but I can definitely pull it up. That was the 2018 Navy report to cut down the ironwood trees.
Right, so one of the reasons given for cutting them down is because they're invasive. I just know if that's unique to the Navy, unique to Bellows, or is that a, is that a national?
Yeah. You know, that that sounds odd to me. Let me double check, read the reports specifically. I think just the fact that they're invasive should not be a reason to take down trees. In fact, I think more the movement is to really be able to plant more trees, ideally indigenous trees to Hawaii, but in terms of all of the health and environmental benefits that it provides, I think it's about more, not less. I would like to take a look if those particular ironwoods posed any other kinds of hazards. Sometimes the tree roots, as you know, lift up asphalt or do other things. So if you would allow me to take a look at that, Donna, we'll make sure we get a response to to the chair before the next meeting.
Okay, appreciate it.
Alavani Lipton.
Aloha, thank you for staying up so early in the morning. So I know that we're suffering from a doctor/physician shortage. I don't know if it came up in your conversations today, or if it was more broad, but I wanted to know if there's going to be some plans for how we can increase, I mean, not just doctors, nurses, all healthcare personnel, but especially in the rural areas. It's something that I've heard about for a long time, especially in, you know, other parts of our district, including the neighbor islands. And then the other thing is more of a comment request that came up at our Houseless Subcommittee meeting that we need definitely more mental health support, more mental health facilities and residential beds. So this is something that's echoing at the grassroots level. And, you know, as you know, we have several folks right here in Kailua who really need help. And it's, we need to do more than temporary or short stays or quick turnarounds at the hospitals. So that's something that's coming from the community. If you can look into that, we would so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, LeBani. The the doctor, you know, workforce shortage absolutely came up. I can tell you that I've already signed on to support a number of different bills, legislative actions to take a look at addressing our workforce shortage, whether it's doctors, nurses, everyone along our healthcare professions. One of the things that Secretary Becerra talked about was the fact that the administration will be rolling out in the next few days, how they're going to ramp up the Public Health Corps. So this is actually a service branch of the military, if you really think about it. Right now, we actually have Public Health Corps members on Maui. I met with a few of them on Monday, when I happened to be on island just for the day before I had to fly back to to DC. And there they're actually providing support to educators, teachers, staff at our schools, who are both helping our students to deal with the trauma that they're, you know, experiencing. But in many cases, they are victims themselves and they need somebody to talk to. Public health workers, these corp workers, they get their, you know, their loans paid for by committing to service. And and so this is a really, really critical part of that pipeline that we really need to get out there into our rural communities specifically. And so Secretary Becerra said, this is one of the ways that we can increase having, you know, that workforce present because they need to go and serve in underserved rural areas. And so this is one piece of that strategy, but at the end of the day, we've got to look at a number of different things, from loan repayment to workforce housing for our professionals, our healthcare professionals. We've got to look at so many other things, like even reimbursement rates, so we can pay them what they need to to be able to to live and survive on their own as well in many of our communities. So definitely a top priority, a big one that has come up and focused on. And mental health, you know, making sure that we have treatment facilities available in all of our communities is critical. We have always unfortunately lacked that bed space, especially long term bed space. It cannot just be that our state hospital also, something that I've felt strongly about from when I was in Senate, is just for the forensically committed patients. You know, some of us remember a time, and this was a very long time ago, I'm dating myself, when you could have community commitments as there as well, so that you could have a place for your loved ones. You know, here in Hawaii, in many cases in your own backyard, where they could get the treatment and help that they needed. We have not been able to do that in in recent decades because it has been completely full with those remanded there by the courts. And so that was the whole reason for building the new building there, so we could free up space, perhaps even look at long term mental health beds as well, because as they age, they need a place to safely go. The more we create these different types of bed spaces, longer term bed spaces, we're going to create access points for the community as well to be able to get people in there, many times their loved ones, to get the treatment and care they need for longer than just a short term stay or an emergency stay, so that they hopefully can, you know, at some point be able to to lead productive lives, be able to be reintegrated into the community. And so it's definitely something that we've really got to to focus more on. And so I've been really looking at those SAMSA grants, those mental health grants at the federal level that hopefully can be brought home for us here so that we can build up our mental health pipeline and continuum of care. So thank you for for continuing to address that at the housing discussion and the overall community as well.
Jade Lau.
Hi Jill.
Hi.
My million dollar question is, there's a lot of money we're giving away to our allies in the world. Where's Maui in all this? I, we continue to hear on the news billions of dollars, millions of dollars are going overseas to our allies. When are we going to start focusing on home, on our own land, on our own people? It's great. We want to support the world. I understand that. But when we are struggling at home, and I'm not just saying Maui, there are other issues within the United States that are totally being ignored, stepped on, looked over, because we're so busy saving the world. Eventually, nobody's going to be at home because we've saved the world. So is there any focus shifting anywhere to our own domestic needs?
Thank you Jade, I appreciate that question. You know, one of the things that I really appreciated that was the fact that in the the last, the first continuing resolution that we had to keep government open, it did include $16 billion to replenish FEMA's Disaster Relief Fund. Had we not replenished that fund, within a month or so FEMA would have gotten down to critical levels where they would not be able to respond, continue to respond at levels they need to, to Maui specifically. But think about every other disaster we have had around the country since then. We have had fires, we have had hurricanes hit places it's never hit before. We have had mass shootings. All of these different things are continuing to plague our community and our country. Making sure that part of that first initial 16 billion, that continuing resolution included 16 billion for FEMA was saying that domestically first and foremost, we take care of our own, especially those that are in the most tragic of situations like Maui. So that to me was a nod to domestic first and foremost. As we keep the doors open, we also make sure that we are prepared to support our loved ones and communities in need. But I absolutely agree with you that as we start to look at the budget, this is something that we have really pushed for, especially on the Democratic side, is oftentimes when conversations get very partisan, you know, the the current majority in Congress will say, well, we need to look at cutting the size of government, we need to cut the budget. Unfortunately, when they talk about cutting the budget, they don't cut defense funding. You know, to me, we need to take equal parts. If we are going to cut anything at all from domestic spending, it also needs to come from defense spending too. Especially when you consider the size of the defense budget relative to domestic spending. Really, if there's anywhere where we can afford to have the cuts, where the pain won't be literally felt by individual people, Kiki, Kapuna out there, their ability to keep a roof over their head, food on the table, then we cannot be leaving defense off the table and taking it off of their backs. And so, you know, I have voted against measures that have called for those kinds of cuts, literally just a few hours ago, voting against things that would have slashed the Department of Interior, slashed various, you know, programs that would be absolutely beneficial to our domestic, you know, needs. And so it is a, it is a challenging time right now, I will tell you, in Congress as we look to that balance as well. But I think for many of us, at the end of the day, it is about making sure that we no longer put our people under the bus and keep that rolling forward. Even for the debt relief that you might have recalled, that the, you know, making sure that we didn't default on our debt, which was, you know, earlier this summer, it was a hard vote for many of us to take, because at the end of the day, we actually had to look at cutting SNAP benefits, food money. Although I will say that through some of those changes, more people will actually qualify for SNAP as well, which might be a good thing. But again, you know, as a premise, for SNAP, food money, it needs to be additive. How can we better support people in this area? Because unfortunately, as we all look around in Hawaii or across the country, too many are going to bed hungry. And SNAP is the ability for us to keep, you know, food on people's tables and keep them working, learning, thriving. And so I completely agree with you that, you know, this balance is something that we need to continue to fight for. And I assure you that's something that we're working on here in Congress. So mahalo for that that question and that advocacy.
Thanks Jill.
David Laia.
Yes, thank you. By the way, you look great and at 2 o'clock in the morning over there, I give you a lot of credit. I, I just wanted to bring up the the concern that's been raised a couple times regarding the coconut rhinoceros beetle and the little fire ants. I'm particularly concerned about the coconut rhinoceros beetle because it originated from the military bases. And I would like very much to understand what military is doing to take some kulianna in addressing this problem here on Oahu in particular. You know, like, how much do they budget? How do they spend? Are they involved, actively involved in eradicating the coconut rhinoceros beetle? And and if any of this funding can also be targeting the little fire ants. I'd like to understand if, I don't know if you can comment on that. I do have a second question, completely off the wall question. And it has to do with first strike capability. I don't know if the military, I haven't heard that term being used very often these days anymore. It used to be a term used 15, 10, 15 years ago. And with our NATO alliances, et cetera, I wonder if we are now better positioned for a first strike capability. So if you could respond to those two questions.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I I will definitely say that I share your concern as somebody who used to be the act chair in the state senate, now serving on the Agriculture Committee. We have become the extinction capital of the world, which is a very sad thing when you consider how many indigenous endemic species we had here at one particular point. But also the fact that sadly, because our our own borders have become so porous, we have become hosts to so many different diseases and pests, like coconut rhinoceros beetle, like little fire ants, like coffee bearer boar. I mean, if you name a crop, I sadly can name for you the threat that it's currently facing right now. And so we definitely have to do more. Let me get back to you specifically on the the money and the supports that the military has been putting towards eradication of all invasive species, particularly things like coconut rhinoceros beetle. But I do know that they have set aside for a number of years now, hopefully more in recent years, resources to look at how they're going to be able to prevent and mitigate the entry of any foreign pests. So, you know, one of the things I'm most familiar with is I just went to Kona Marine Corps Base, probably about a month or so ago. And one of the things I noticed is you do see the traps that are around the airfields especially. And I do recall that even when I was in the state senate, I actually went out at night looking for what was suspected to be a brown tree snake that may have come off the wheels of a plane from Guam. Fortunately, there was none, but extensive traps were set up, night monitoring was set up. I actually hunted through the grass and was part of of that search as well. Nothing was found, but there are various measures in place. But I'd like to to get back to you, David, specifically with what is being done, because I wouldn't want to misspeak either over, you know, state anything or understate anything in terms of their commitment. But I I do know that there were various environmental pots of money and whatnot focused specifically on things like invasive species and biosecurity measures. It's something I feel very strongly about. I've testified before our Congressional I Committee about my concerns with the invasive pests and the need for us to be more proactive. You know, if you think about it, I come home every weekend if I can. All we do is we get a paper when we're flying into Hawaii, saying, do you have any fruits or vegetables? And everyone checks off, no, regardless. And when we leave Hawaii, now even your carry ons need to be screened by USDA inspectors. And so there's quite more of a system set up to leave Hawaii and protect everyone from what might be in Hawaii, but who's protecting us? And I think that is where we need to start to strengthen our borders from those invasive pests and species that are coming in. So we will get back to you specifically on how the military, the DOD, is addressing these various biosecurity threats that we have. First strike capability, let me get back to you on that one as well. Specifically in terms of the military's preparedness in this particular area. I feel very bad that I can't give you a really great answer on this, given that I do also serve on the Armed Services Committee as well. So I probably should be more familiar with this, but I will tell you that I have not heard in my time in Congress yet that particular term being brought up as well. So it may be that the term itself has been changed into a new term. You know, the military likes its acronyms and its terminologies, but let me get back to you specifically on that. And if you want me to drill down deeper on something specifically or a particular region, just reach out to us and we'll make sure that we get you that information. So, thank you.
Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Hi, I just wanted to mention that you raised humanitarian, international humanitarian aid a few times when you were telling us about your updates. And I wanted to just ask that humanitarian aid also be considered for those suffering, innocent people suffering also in Gaza and other places affected. In the same vein, asking for a ceasefire, because there are hospitals with babies and children who are being orphaned and injured. And I think that that's something that should be considered and not just, you know, one sided aid.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. And, you know, in our report, we did kind of go into how, you know, I have joined many others calling for humanitarian pause in all of this, from the very beginning as well, signing on to letters, saying that we need to not forget our humanity in all of this. Israel does have a right to defend herself from terroristic attacks and what they experienced was absolutely devastating. At the same time, we all must abide and understand that there is international law as well. There are innocents on all sides and we need to respect that. You know, part of it was also, you know, that we've been calling for is that humanitarian aid get into Gaza to support, you know, the Palestinians that are suffering there. We are now slowly starting to see the trickle out of, you know, Americans, foreigners, you know, coming out of Gaza. I met with Ramona Okuhara's family when they were here in DC. We've been talking with the State Department. I'm so glad to see that she is out, but there are so many more in there. And it is heartbreaking to see what is happening. There is, there is no reason why any kind of civil conflict at all should include bombing refugee camps and hospitals. And so for many of us, this is a very difficult time in which we are telling, in many cases, our friends, that at the end of the day, it has to be about making sure that we we preserve our humanity in all of this and respect life on all sides. And so appreciate you also bringing that up. And I can tell you that it is a constant conversation that comes up every single day here in DC in terms of how we're also, as I talked about, balanced earlier, going to make sure that we get help to where it's absolutely needed. Utilities, fuel, drinking water, food, aid, all of these things have to get into Gaza so that we can support those that are in critical need, but also again, that humanitarian pause. Because that aid cannot get to people if you have a constant barrage of bombing at the same time, so.
Evan Weber.
Mahalo Sharon, Oha ere, Rep Takuta, mahalo for being here with us.
Hawaii, Rep. Kuda Mahalo for being here with us. Yeah, it's a real privilege to have you here. And since we are grateful to that privilege, I do want to follow up on Kellyanne's comments. I wasn't sure whether I was going to raise them, but Jade's comments, because I just wasn't sure of their relevance to our business here tonight at the Kailua Neighborhood Board, but Jade's comments reminded me deeply of their relevance. And yeah, I, this, this issue is very personal for me. I'm Jewish. I had my bar mitzvah up the road at Temple Emmanuel when I was 13 years old. And yeah, I'm the descendant of people who fled Eastern Europe because of the Holocaust and the violence and persecution that preceded it. So obviously, when the horrific attacks committed by Hamas were carried out, my, my heart and soul sank and the disgusting violence and rhetoric that has proceeded, that has come afterwards in all directions has also been really horrid. But yeah, I mean, I, I totally hear you and I agree that Israel has a right to defend herself. But as, as a Jew and as someone who was grown up, grew up being told, "Never again, never again would we let such atrocities happen," to see them happening frankly in our name and carried out by US politicians in defense, leveraging Jewish grief and sending US tax dollars, it has been just as, if not more, deeply, deeply emotionally heart-wrenching and depressing and traumatizing and atrocious. This is not about Jews versus Muslims. It's not about good versus evil. It's not about light skin versus dark skin. It's about humanity versus whatever else. And shutting off the water for 2 million people is not self-defense. Creating a million refugees overnight is not self-defense. These acts that are being carried out again with our tax dollars and with the backing of US politicians, none of that is self-defense at this point. And like you said yourself, there is no excuse for bombing refugee camps, even if there might be one terrorist leader in there, if hundreds die, same as hospitals, et cetera, et cetera. I know, I know you understand this. And here in Hawaii, we have our own history of occupation, of apartheid regimes, of internment. We have learned these lessons so many times and we cannot morally allow them to continue. So I do want to echo Kellyanne's ask that a humanitarian pause is not enough. A humanitarian pause and a ceasefire have a real distinction. Humanitarian pause is an excuse for the continuation of the enabulant and supporting of these war crimes that are occurring with our tax dollars and in our names, and particularly in my name as an American Jew. And I'm pleased asking you to call for a ceasefire, also to offer significantly less humanitarian aid dollars for the atrocities that are being committed and significantly more military dollars than the humanitarian aid dollars that are being proposed in the White House's package, to me is also a moral atrocity. We already fund the IDF to the tune of a six of their budget annually, and now we are going to send them 14 billion more dollars so that they can continue to commit war crimes. And we send in some Band-Aids and a few doctors in there and, and call it a fix and a balance. Personally, I think it's morally inexcusable to send more money there as well, especially as Jade said, when we have so many problems here at home, right here in our backyard and here in your own district. So I'm calling, this took a lot of bravery and courage for me to interrupt our time and to speak very vulnerably and personally about my own lived experience and our history and my personal history, my family's history and how it's affecting me in this moment. It's hard to wake up every morning. I cry a lot of days, but I think that now is a time for that courage and moral bravery. And I'm asking you to please exhibit the same because I was raised that we would not let these things ever happen again. And they are calling them animals, just like they called us in the Holocaust. And that is the intent of genocide and that is what we are seeing now. So please call for a ceasefire and please do not send any more money for these war crimes without conditions that they be used without violation of international law.
Thank you, Evan. I appreciate that, that honesty, that vulnerability, that openness that you have. I think what you have displayed here is exactly what we are seeing 1,000 times over here in Congress every day, that, that same honesty, vulnerability, openness on all sides that we're getting, whether they're from Hawaii, whether they're from across the country or the world, sharing with us, you know, how they feel right now, what this, these votes mean. I can tell you right now, there's no money. There's no $14 billion. We did pass something through the Congress today, which I voted against, but it's probably dead on arrival, as we know, in the Senate. So as of right now, especially as you said, absent of conditions that will make sure that there is real humanitarian aid going through there, how that money is going to be sent, how that money is even provided, right now, there is nothing for anyone, whether it is Israel, whether it's Ukraine, whether it is to make sure that we are protected from the threat of China and the Indo-Pacific, nothing, nothing right now. And that is going to be a battle that we will have to face in the next week to two weeks, literally, even as we determine whether or not we can keep the doors of our own government open. You know, right now, it is a, a very difficult time. I wish I could promise you that if we called for a ceasefire, it would cease and end today. What I do know and what I've been calling for, for day one, is that, again, to your point, that we remember our humanity and we preserve our humanity through our actions, not just our words. Words are easy, but through our actions as well. We have made our own mistakes, tragic mistakes, horrible mistakes as a country in the past. And part of it is making sure that we're not complicit and a part of it in others doing the absolute same thing. And so, again, I just really appreciate your, your honesty and your openness in all of this. And I can assure you that every single day, it is a personal struggle for us to really determine how we move forward, especially in a situation where, yes, we're one of 435 votes, we are part of a minority, but we want to be as vocal as one as possible, again, to remind people of the reality of the situation on both sides. I think a lot of people see what's in the news and that's one thing, but if you really take a look at all of the various votes, decisions and other things we've had to come by, it is a reflection of the fact that the humanity in all of this is being lost and that cannot be the absolute case. And so, appreciate that and, you know, we can also have this conversation offline as well. I think you know how to reach me too. But again, just appreciate your honesty. And I think for everyone watching this, exactly what you have said and shared, this is something that is being felt, as you mentioned, across the country, across the world, in our very own communities. And it is a very, very personal, it's a personal moment for many, for many. And so, thank you, thank you for sharing that, that with me.
Representative Kuda, do you have time for three more?
Can I make them really fast answers?
Yes.
Okay.
We have John White, followed by Gary Weller, followed by me.
Okay.
John White.
Good chair. Yeah, real quick, Jill. Thank you for living in the mainland for us. Please stay vigilant with this Red Hill defuelling. Need to make sure they're doing the right way. But sharing my video, because we bring in everything for you guys, everything. So Jill, we don't have more than three days worth of food storage in the state. It's scary to think about. You need to think about creating something. When we get hit by a big hurricane, that will hit us one day. Remember Hawaii, everybody, Hurricane Iniki, Puerto Rico. I think they're still catching cracks from that. And then second on that, we're doing this whole solar initiative where everything's on solar. We're getting five nutrients right across the pond, solar. What happens when the power goes out? We still be able to load and unload these ships for you guys. We need to have a backup plan with a potential fossil fuel source so we can continue bringing in everything for you guys. But I think the food storage is a concern to me in case of times of war. That's why we need to keep the Jones Act. We need to keep supplies here. We're a very isolated gang. But again, thank you, Jill. One need to really answer, go to sleep.
Thank you, John. Appreciate what you're doing out there, working hard to make sure that we all do have food on the table, like we talked about earlier. Absolutely agree with you that food insecurity we have is a big issue, especially on my role in the AI Committee. We've talked a lot about that. I'll be bringing the AGC Chair to Hawaii, GT Thompson, over here with probably a bipartisan group to really, well, not over here, back home to Hawaii, to really show them that we have the opportunity to feed ourselves, but right now, we're not doing that. And it is a huge vulnerability that we live and exist with every single day. And so, food security needs to be part of the equation. We need to be able to support growing our own, support our food producers that do so much for us, support the transportation mechanisms that get food to and from all of our islands especially. And definitely, when it comes to energy production, whether it's solar or otherwise, we need to make sure that there's redundancies and backups because we are on our own in the middle of the Pacific. As we know, it will take two to three days for help to really get to us. How are we going to make sure that we can provide for ourselves in the case of any type of tragedy or disaster we may face, whether it's man-made or natural? So, thank you for what you're doing out, out there on the docks and look forward to seeing you when we get home.
Gary Weller.
Hi, Jill. Thank you very much for attending tonight. Talking to different committee members, we've had many, many storm drain issues here. We've had many, 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 many consent decrees here. We have the Red Hill situation here. We really feel that having the EPA office in San Francisco managing anything for Hawaii is useless. It's about time that the EPA opens an office in Hawaii, fully staff it, take the responsibility away from the state of Hawaii and who causes a lot of these problems, such as the Maui fires, the county, the state, the LNR not maintaining their lands properly. So we really feel that it is the time for the EPA to have a full office in Hawaii to administrate all of their action. It's been a long, couple times the EPA has put one person here in the federal building, usually somebody that was going to retire out, but the time is over for this. We've had too many mistakes, too many brown waters, too much sewage going into the sewage system, too many issues with the military bases. And we only have the islands, where different from the mainland, where they might process storm waters because of their, their distance away from the ocean. It's only asked to go one place and that's into the ocean. And we can send you drone footage of the terrible actions that have happened on this side of the island, how many cases have hit the Department of Health, which they've done nothing about. So I don't know if you can help us there, but the time has come.
Thank you, Gary. It's good to see you. Thanks for continuing to serve on, on the Kailua Neighborhood Board as well. You know, I agree with-
The oldest person here, Meg.
Well, you look great. You look great.
Thank you.
You know, I, I agree, there's, there's so many issues that we are tracking right now, whether it be Red Hill, which needs to continually be monitored. That's a generational thing that we are going to have to keep on top of, even once the, the tanks are defueled. That's not the end of it in terms of our monitoring and our efforts to make sure we monitor, remediate, we support our community, make sure it never happens again. But whether it's storm drain discharge, you know, I look at wastewater issues, solid waste issues, we have cesspool issues, all of these different types of things. We're at a critical point. I mean, take a look at just as you mentioned, the consent decree that we had to do with Kona Bay. You know, that was almost a half a billion dollar project there that, you know, we had to do as well because of, of the mistakes that we had seen and the discharge that we had seen. So let me talk to the EPA and see exactly, you know, because I agree with you that, that part of it is having a meaningful physical presence in the islands. What I'd also like to see is whether the EPA's jurisdictions also flow into more of the Pacific, the territories and whatnot, then it would make sense to have part of Region Nine actually here in Hawaii as well. I, I bet that was considered at one point. I would want to know why that wasn't fully activated on. As you mentioned, I think we've had like one body, we might have one body now, but again, a meaningful physical presence in the island, especially given the number of cases that they are actively working on right now. They're, they've got a lot of bodies out there on Maui, boots on the ground. Red Hill is not going to go away anytime soon. And just given the sheer number of cesspools that we have that need to be converted and the discharge issues we have, there would be a case to be made, you know, to have at least a temporary physical presence that, you know how temporary is in government? It turns permanent, right? So let's see how we can get a start to this and, and we'll get back to you in terms of what that might, might take. It, it might even just take, and you'd hate to hear this, but just an initial assessment or study. The Congressional Budget Office would have to score it and see how much it might cost. So then we can really start to put, you know, pencil to paper and whatnot, but let's take a look at that because I agree with you. There's a lot of EPA work going on right now and we don't want them just doing it from afar. So, thank you.
Jill, Jill, do we have a good email address for you? Because Donna mentioned the Ironwoods and I'd like to send you the study so you don't have to spend a lot of time researching where to find them. And I can easily send them to you because I've done them all already.
Absolutely. I believe you have Kendra's email, yeah? Or someone's email.
Nicole Gray is, is our normal conduit.
Yes. Nicole would be excellent. Nicole will get that right to me as well and share it with, you know, members of our team that need to see that as well. So.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, last, last question. Thank you so much for sharing with us. This is a question I asked at your town hall in Kanaui early in the year. And, you know, in the middle of Israel, Ukraine, November 17th and everything else, you know, every day is a crisis, but we also have a big problem looming in about 10 years. It's projected that Social Security revenue will not meet the benefit payments. And by law, when that happens, payments will be reduced. So in about more or less 10 years, we're looking at a 10% reduction in Social Security benefits and it only spirals downward from there. And the sooner a solution is found, the less painful it will be later on. And you gave a really thoughtful response, but the, the question is, how do we, how do we get an earlier resolution that will minimize the, the pain downstream?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a great question. I wish I could say that we were closer to some kind of answer or solution since we talked about this months ago as well, but it continues to be something, you know, for all of our entitlement programs that sadly to me, and I'm speaking honestly, often gets kicked, you know, the can gets kicked down the road. But when we talk about potential insolvency or reduction of benefits for Social Security in 10 years, we realize we're already really late in terms of really being able to activate a solution. And so, I know, I know I'm, I'm new to Congress, but I know there's been a lot of discussions about what we can do to, to stretch that, you know, that corpus so we can continue to provide that meaningful benefit people need going forward. How do we change things up, whether it's for current contributors into, into Social Security, current workers or whatnot, all of these different things? I wish I had a good answer for you or a better solution. I wish I could tell you honestly that it's been worked on right now in Congress for the last few months, despite all of the craziness that's been happening, but I do think it's something we absolutely have to focus on. You know, as I mentioned, right now, I am on the Armed Services, I am on the Agriculture Committee and also a special select subcommittee. One of the things I indicated at the very beginning of Congress is one day I would like the opportunity to serve on the Ways and Means Committee, which oversees entitlement programs like Social Security. We need to dig down deep and long-term to really start to focus on what those solutions are going to be to make sure that those benefits people are relying on are going to be there for them in the future. I mean, it's really sad that a lot of times I will talk to folks, workers right now active in the field, that say, "That's not going to be there for me." You know, I can't count on anything. And that, that's really hard to hear, but especially for our seniors right now who depend on that. We have got to make sure we're doing more to, to increase the solvency of, of those entitlement programs and funds. How we budget, how we allocate these funds, how we move forward, all of these things have to, have to- How we budget, how we allocate these funds, how we move forward, all of these things have to, have to change and be done with intention though. And so, you know, again, I, I wish I had a better answer for you here at 2:00 in the morning in DC. But you do have a long-term commitment from me that that is something that we have to, to really sit down and work on. It cannot be done in a partisan fashion. This has to be something that's done in a bipartisan, bicameral fashion along with the White House to make sure that we, we take care of our retirees, our seniors that really depend every day on that Social Security support.
Unfair question at 2:12 in the morning, but once again, a very thoughtful response. But in, in the middle of all the, all the daily crisis, you know, now's the time for forward progress. So, thank you so very, very, very much for joining us tonight. And you've been very generous with your time and very informational for us. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you for being very generous with your agenda. I know I've really thrown you folks off, but hopefully I can log on again as time permits. But mahalo to all of you. Great to see so many familiar faces and, and old friends.
Mahalo. Aloha. All right, everyone. Next order of business is board business. We have two committee motions, both from Planning, Zoning and Environment. I'll read the first one and then ask Donna Wong to, to amplify anything. The Kailua Neighborhood Board supports Bill 52, which adds fines to provide a more effective deterrent and a hefty penalty to developers that violate the Monster Homes ordinance by supplying incorrect information on plans or convert rooms for multifamily uses during or post-construction. Specifically, Bill 52 includes the following provisions. The following violations are subject to an initial fine of up to $25,000 plus up to $10,000 per day per violation. One, a violation of any of the development standards under subsection C as a result of incorrect information supplied by the applicant, planmaker, architect and/or engineer on plans submitted for a building permit application. Two, construction or conversion of the structure in violation of any of the development standards of subsection C. Donna, would you like to elaborate?
No, I think the, I think the motion explains the bill very well. Every community on this island has been subject to monster houses. And even though there's a law on the books, they're not supposed to build them anymore, there has not been a deterrent, real deterrent until this, when the, when the DPP can go out and find the person who totally ignores the law. So, I urge the board to support this motion.
All right. Any discussion? Online? Any resident? Okay. Let's call for the vote. Josiah Akow. Travis Council. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Yes. David Laia. Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Mike Lee. Levani Lipton. Yes. Carol Bishiro.
Yes.
Yes. Kayla Morrell. Abstain. That, that's, that's actually pretty good. I agree. Kate Ryder. Yes. Claudine Tomasa.
Yes.
Yes. Steve Trecker. Yes. Evan Weber. Yes. Gary Weller.
Yes.
Yes. John White. Online? Donna Wong. Yes. Jeff Sukernick.
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. The motion passes 13 in favor, none opposed and one abstention. The next motion is the Kailua Neighborhood Board opposes Bill 6, 2023 for the following reasons. One, the self-certification program does not have to comply with the Koholau Poco Sustainable Communities Plan. Two, it is unclear if applications under the self-certification program will be on the DPP website for the public to review. Three, the bill states that the program is temporary but does not contain an expiration date. Four, under self-certification, how will DPP know or ensure that a development is being built in the correct zoning? Five, rescinding a building permit issued under the self-certification for health and safety reasons should be automatic and not left up to the discretion of the planning director as stated in Bill 6, in the bill. Six, the bill does not state what criteria will be used to determine if an application is eligible for self-certifications. And seven, the bill is silent on who is responsible if a self-certified professional does not have a professional liability insurance but certifies projects. Bill 6 was passed by the City Council yesterday. However, because it's a temporary provision that eventually might be converted to permanent, we have an opportunity to take advantage of the work that has been put into this motion to establish a position. And so, that's where we are. Donna, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, I would. Esther, our councilwoman, has been the only one who's opposed this bill at the council. She's representing the community and that's what this board is looking out for the residents on who's going to be minding the development and construction and if it's self-certification. So, she put in a couple of amendments and I would like her to explain what happened on the floor yesterday.
Thank you. Is this okay here? Okay. So, yesterday, and, and for everybody, you should know that this bill is of grave concern to many people, including many of the unions. And the reason being that there was a report by the Department of Permitting and Planning in August. We had a hearing on it and it was replete with grave concerns over the caliber of developers for these type of projects. Now, I happen to know some who are very good, including from Kailua, but the fact remains that we were very concerned about public safety for many of these projects. So, I attempted to offer two amendments, one which would strike all Bill 7 projects from the self-certification project, which was defeated. Only council member Wire from the North Shore joined me. But I also offered another amendment, which was successful, the vote was 6-3. And what it did was it created a high threshold for the developers to be able to self-certify. You have to have proven that you have succeeded in getting a Bill 7 permit twice and one certificate of occupancy. It's very, very high threshold. And so, the Department of Permitting and Planning yesterday also said that when queried on their thoughts about my amendment, they said they, in the rules, they're actually going to make it stronger. So, I would urge the board to pass this measure. In the debate, there actually was discussion of why am I even offering both amendments since the room clearly stated that my first amendment was going to be defeated. And I said I wanted it on record because I'm here to represent my constituency. And I explained everything about what was going on, on at 3:30 Kool-Ale and how it was inconsistent with the Koholau Poco Sustainability, Sustainable Communities Plan. And I have to tell you, just given that discussion, there is empathy that maybe when Bill 19 was considered in 2019, that it should have targeted the urban core and not areas where there was inconsistency. So, I shared with Donna that members did come to me and say, you know what? Do you want to look at it? And I said, of course, it just, no one seemed to be interested. You always say that Kailua is all nimbyism and to the contrary, I don't think you thought about what Bill 19 was going to do for the winward side. So, again, I'm sorry that it passed yesterday, but we do have a strict standard in it. So, I would like the Kailua Neighborhood Board to be on record because it's going to be very difficult for them to be able to utilize the self-certification process. And second, we may be able to tackle the underlying ordinance to carve out areas where the 60-foot height maximum is inconsistent with the, their sustain, the Community Sustainability Plan and to carve that out. So, just, I appreciate your, your support.
Mahalo.
Just want to let everybody know, Bill 7 is the Affordable Housing, Affordable Housing Bill. That was passed, I believe, in 2018, 2019. And this board opposed that because there was no opportunity for any public participation whatsoever that didn't go to the city, that project wouldn't go to the City Council. It was just all approved by DPP and there were a bunch of other reasons. So, I really appreciate, appreciate Esther just going to bat for us and our community.
Okay. Open for discussion. Evan Weber.
Yeah, I just had a question. Maybe you could help answer it, Esther. So, I, the stated intention of this bill was to deal with the DPP backlog. I don't know if that was the actual intention of the bill or not. No? What, what, what is the?
So, for everybody knows, there's different processes for affordable housing projects. So, Bill 7 of 2019 was intended to deal with properties up to 20,000 square feet up to. And it was to provide them with subsidies to increase the number of affordable housing units. And so, what this Bill 6 does is it will bypass the DPP and allow them to self-certify their projects. So, people share concerns that a project in Kailua would not have a city council involved. So, what self-certification does is it allows, because Bill 7 is a priority for the urban core. And they, they are concerned about the delay in projects, as is anyone. So, the issue of parity was raised. I'm not unempathetic to the fact that there are delays, but everybody, no family is untouched by a delay. So, the question did come up about parity. There are a lot of big developers who would want this. So, this could potentially open the door, right? And of course, those who advocated for this said, said not. So, I want to let you know, the idea was not to improve the process. It was to give preference to build seven projects and get, get them off the ground. So, my worry is that those who are building this, some are good, but some are not. And so, there could be liability purposes for the landowner, for example, and, and shoddy construction. Having said that, it was all discussed yesterday. So, I, that's why I wanted everybody to know exactly what their vote was in allowing for this. And then again, the vote was 6-3 in favor of my amendment to increase the threshold of who could self-certify. I, I got to tell you, it's a very, very hard threshold to meet because the Bill 7 process is very complicated to begin with. Again, you have to have had two successful permits to be able to self-certify and a certificate of occupancy. Very, very difficult. So, it is a temporary program. And, and, and the idea behind this Bill 7 process is to expedite the building of affordable housing on smaller lots. Again, I think that we need to keep our eye on the underlying ordinance to see whether or not for future projects, I don't believe we can affect Kool-Ale, 3:30 Kool-Ale, but for all future projects that we may be able to pull, pull ourselves out from the, the underlying ordinance.
Jade Lau.
Just to clarify in layman's terms, your amendments make it so that proven good builders that follow the rules can continue to build in a, in a expeditious way. And those that are unproven, it holds them to the rules of the given area for building, like the height issues in the Koholau Poco Sustainable Plan.
Not, not quite. What it does is it does not allow them to self-certify. So, my amendment will, the idea was to get the cream of the crop of developers. If you do not meet that threshold, you will not be able to self-certify. You will have to go through the, you have to go through the normal DPP process.
Right. So, you have to have proven yourself to be reputable.
In this specific process.
Sounds like how the real world works.
Yeah, yeah. There was discussion yesterday on why my amendment didn't apply to all affordable housing projects. And I'm like, no. No other affordable housing project is given a preference of self-certification. So, why would I do that? Everybody would qualify, right? So, the threshold is higher now. What I said with regard to carving out those who are, whose height maximum is lower than this, which allows for 60 feet, that is something that needs to be explored and that we, I would have to amend the underlying ordinance to carve, not just Kailua. I need to do a study of all sustainability plans that are inconsistent with the 60-foot maximum. But given what happened yesterday, I think everybody just was shocked about why am I doing this? And when I explained it, they got it. And they said, they did say we should have limited it. And I said, well, it is a regret to me. The law is the law and you can't blame me for trying to, trying to. Well, first of all, I had concerns over self-certification in general. But, so I, I got a lot of understanding yesterday after the vote.
Esther, thank you for always having integrity and standing up for our community. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Levani Lipton.
Let me explain what, what Esther is talking about with the 60-foot. Our Koholau Poco Sustainable Communities Plan for the commercial district, the height limit is 40 feet. Bill 7 allows lots like automatic, no public input, to build to 60 feet. So, that's what we're talking about with the issue between the 40 and 60 feet.
I just had a, I had the same question as Jade, but in a different way. So, increasing the threshold, it kind of serves as a screening tool to weed out the bad. Yeah? Okay. So, that's what. And that passed. Okay. But that passed. Or that's, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Yeah, just the-
Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Oh, sorry.
In the PZNE Committee, I just, we, one of the things that I mentioned and I want to mention here is that affordable housing like targets some of our more vulnerable community members. And I don't think that we should, you know, even chance the fact that there might be something bad could happen and how are we expecting them to, you know, are they going to be responsible for suing someone? Like, it's not cheap or easy to pursue, you know, justice when something like that happens. And I, I don't, I just worry that there isn't enough safeguards. But I mean, the amendment sounds great, but it's the bill and it's the heart of it. Then it was not where I felt it was supposed to be. So, I think we should think of our more vulnerable community members when we vote on this motion.
Evan Weber.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for walking us through all that, Donna and Esther and others who've been part of the discussion. My, the second part of my question was just going to be whether there are other things that the council is doing to address the underlying problem of the DPP backlogs this year, like considering staffing increases or anything like that and just, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Any, any resident comments online? Okay. Call for the vote. Gary Weller.
My, my thoughts were to Esther Einer and the wonderful job she always attempts to do for us. One of the problems that I foresee here in, in Hawaii has been that a company builds a building or a development or a townhouse complex or whatever they build. And nowadays, they throw it into a limited partnership. And as soon as the warranty period is over, they bankrupt their company and they eliminate the liability. the liability. And this has happened in Manoa, Palama Valley, other big buildings around town, then the association has to fix these problems. There's no real responsibility. And with the building department not being involved in the process of monitoring these plans, these developers, these inspections, I don't think the citizens have anything to protect them anymore. And so that's just my comments, and there's so many examples of this. As soon as Stanford Carr finished building the peninsula, he closed out that LLC. So once the developer's done with his company that did the development, there's nobody to sue, nobody to go after, no liability policy. Maybe one of the thoughts that we should be thinking is that a developer is responsible for the project, for the length of the existence of the project. Maybe it's 50 years, maybe it's 75 years. I don't know, but problems don't always show up in the beginning. Look at that building that sunk in Florida. Whoever thought that that was going to just sink 30 years after it was built? So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion. Josiah Kavas Council, Amber Granite, Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Yes. David Laia. Yes. Jade Lao. Yes. Mike Lee. Lavani Lipton. Yes. Carol Mioschero.
Yes.
Yes. Kayla Morel. Yes. Kate Ryder. Yes. Claudine Jamasa.
Yes.
Yes. Steve Trucker. Yes. Evan Weber. Yes. Gary Weller.
Yes.
Yes. John White.
Yes.
Yes. Donna Wong. Yes. Jeff Suckernick.
Yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously with 15 in favor. Next order of business, our local agency reports. Board of Water Supply, Danny Urnales. Online.
Hi. Hi, good evening.
Aloha.
Hi. So I have the report from the Board of Water. So there are no water main breaks to report for the month of October, and our water announcement for the month, Board of Water is launching its 2024 poster and poetry contest. The poster contest is open for kids, students, grades kindergarten through six, and the poetry contest is open for kids, students, grade seven through 12. This year's theme is our water, our home, and the deadline to enter is February 28, More information can be found at our website at BoardOfWaterSupply.com/watercontest. And then I have some responses from the questions from last month. Let's see. So, let's see. Okay, so the first question was, when is the completion date of the Aulua Road drain plumbing ditch that the Board of Water contractors are putting in? So expected date for completion is November 2023. And then the other question is about the Genki Balls. Yeah, the Genki Ball activity was used at the Imagine a Day Without Water, which was held a couple of weekends ago. Board of Water does not endorse the Genki Balls, however, for more information, they have you visit the website, genkialaway.org. And let's see, third question, people have noticed cracks in some of their retaining walls that have recently been installed speed bumps in the area, and ask if the Board of Water will be putting concrete jackets over our water mains to protect this. So the concrete jackets that we do put over their water mains are used to protect our main from other utilities. The board does not, shows no evidence of installing these jackets will help prevent any main breaks near the speed bumps due to the speed bumps. Is there any questions?
Questions for Board of Water Supply. Online, residents. Okay, no questions tonight, Danny. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Marine Corps Base Hawaii, is there a representative tonight? Okay, tonight is the Marine Corps Ball, so it's understandable. We'll move on, resident and community concerns. If any resident would like to raise a concern, question, comment, now's the opportunity, free form, three minutes. Anyone online? Okay, it's usually our hot corner. We'll move on to mayor and governor reports. Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative tonight, Shane Enright.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Jim Ireland sends his regards. And I have a number of issues tonight, more than usual. So if you want me to speed up or slow down, just let me know. The first one had to do with Aulua Road and the homelessness there. We did send our core team, which is part of HSD Emergency Services Department, to go check on the situation, and they reported back that there was an issue in getting close to the encampment due to high brush. So we're going to go back with a bigger team and might have to bring some equipment to cut down the brush and possibly HPD with us. So we're going to have a report back on that in December. The second issue had to do with fatalities and serious car crashes or motor vehicle collisions. I was told to check with Honolulu Police Department on fatalities. What happens with emergency medical services is that we will go and we'll assist with the death pronouncement, but they are tallied or calculated with HPD. But I can tell you, as the PIO for EMS, that we don't have a high number of critical fatalities in the Kailua area. One area that we do see, a lot of crashes or serious fatalities is Mokapu Boulevard due to the, just the speed. But other than that, it's pretty, it's pretty low number compared to the rest of the island. Another issue was about the egress out of neighborhoods during major emergencies. Department of Transportation Services replied that the city would have to coordinate with DOT, and it doesn't sound like they had anything concrete to report back tonight, but that they would do that in relation to the highways and freeways. So if you would like, I can try to get back to you with some more information on that one. Also, information based on evacuation plans. The answer came back from Department of Emergency Management, who said that they don't put out specific plans for tsunamis versus hurricane evacuations because they don't want to, they want to prevent confusion. But if you do want to take a look or gather information for yourself, which we do recommend, families do have some plan in place, to visit DEM's website, which I believe is www.dm.gov. We also got a question about Genki Balls. I believe it's being used in the Aulua Project, but there's no plans to use it anywhere else on the island or in Kailua at this time. More information on those, which I had to look up myself, I wasn't too familiar, is Another issue was the berm opening in Kailepulu that is planned for November 27 through the 29th, and that's a DFM matter, Department of Facility and Maintenance. If anybody ever has specific questions, they can reach out to them. Another one, hand soap at all of our bathrooms in Kailua, asking if there could be dispensaries. The answer back was due to increased vandalism and consistent vandalism, they just can't keep them up. So unfortunately, from everyone else, we are told to use hand sanitizer. And that was the answer back on that. Sandy Beach Showers asked if there's been a decrease in water consumption. There has been. There was an issue, it was fixed on October 30th, but they have seen an average decrease anywhere from 4,000 to 10,000 gallons per month. So they are tracking that. Another issue was storm drainage and asking if there could be additional workers here on the winward side. The city does have two teams that cover Kaniohue and Kailua. They have three members on each team, and there is discussion to increase that, to get better equipment and more personnel. But of course, that's an ongoing matter at this time. Storm drain filters are in place at the Kailepulu stream. They are cleaned by DFM crews, and that's based on need, not a set schedule. So they don't come every couple of weeks. They come at need, and I would think that would be just based on calls to them if necessary. And lastly, a question about vacancies for first responders on the winward side. HFD reported that they have vacant, they have 15 vacancies, which it varies from captain to firefighter one. HPD said they will get back to us next month. And my department also reported that we don't have any vacancies in ocean safety or EMS. EMS, ocean safety, I don't think has any vacancies. EMS is short-staffed, we're always looking for good people, paramedics, EMTs, so if you know anybody, send them our way. But we have personnel staffed at the unit, but we don't have a big reliever pool. So sometimes if those people are out sick, we do have to close the unit and have people come fill in from other areas. That is, I think, everything. I hope I touched on all your questions.
Shane, if I could have an electronic copy of your report so that some people can read it as we go forward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Shane Enright. Lavani Lipton.
Hi, Shane. I asked Jim last month, actually, I wanted clarification on what the actual process was for a reorg, because I spoke to the folks at the base yard, and they are severely understaffed, so there are not enough personnel to clean the storm drains. But if we can rally the community, then perhaps we can demand additional people to clean the storm drains. So I just wanted to know, what is the process so that we can be informed and we don't have to keep going to DFM saying, we know that they're clogged, we know that it contributes to pollution in Kailua Bay, what are you going to do about it? So I just, it was actually a process question. And then the second comment is just a very quick kudos to the HNL info. I don't live in Mililani Maoka, but I kept getting the updates on the fire, and I thought that was, you know, very helpful and I think probably put people's minds at ease, so I kept getting the alerts. So I just wanted to say mahalo for that, and the system was working.
I understand, thank you.
Shane, regarding the storm drain cleaning, if you could, if you could feed back. Our knowledge is that these storm drain filters were installed, I believe, in 2019. They were all found to be clogged in 2023. None of them had ever been cleaned. Upon cleaning in 2023, they were found clogged again two months later. So there's a suggestion that they need cleaning about every two months. So cleaned based on need, not schedule, doesn't inspire much confidence.
Completely understand, Chair. I'm sorry, did you say a specific location in Kailua for those clogged drains?
There are about 110 or so filters that were installed, mostly in Enchanted Lake.
Okay.
Yeah, there are over 700 storm drains, so about 110, I think, have had these filters installed in the last four years.
Okay, got it.
And there is only one person and one machine able to clean these filters, and that one person is often sent on tasks elsewhere. So that was our understanding of the situation. So if we're incorrect, you know, we'd appreciate better information, but based on what we think we know, that wasn't a very good answer.
Yeah, and to just circle back a little bit more, when you asked about the reorg, there was a mention in the answer about not being able to shuffle people around, and it sounded, from the answer that I got, that that's just how many people they have. They have the two teams made of three people each. If they need more people, that's what I'm hearing. I got you, and I'll pass that along to them. I'll see if we can get some more from them.
Okay, mahalo. Donna Wong.
Before the berm is opened, is the water tested to ensure that the equality that's going out into the ocean?
I'll ask.
The Seemater Act standards? Yes, appreciate that. Thank you.
David Laia.
Yes, hi, Shane. I was the one raising the question regarding this Sandy Beach showers. They trickle out now that they have this new special head, so it's not a surprise that the volume of water, of usage is down substantially, because if you're there for a shower, you have to sit in this little trickling of water. I was wondering if there's a way to increase the pressure so that we can actually have a good shower. The other thing was, there's no shut-off valve. So these valves, they turn on automatically, you walk away, you can't shut off the water. So you leave the shower area and you leave a running shower, and there's no way to turn off the water. And so we feel terrible walking away from a shower with the, that doesn't work. So anyway, I don't know who's handling all that, but those are the specific issues relating to that.
Really quick to follow up with that. There has been some concern about making sure that that doesn't happen to our showers in Kailua. We were wondering if there was plans to also install those because people don't want those here. We'd rather just be able to get in, get a quick shower and get out and actually get clean. It's also a health issue because I've heard that it can help, you know, reduce sunburn by just like having cooling off and cooling people's temperatures like quickly. And, yeah. Also, but my big question that I wanted to bring up today is, I wasn't sure if you heard, Kailua Police Department's report, but there is a concern that there are some permanent encampments in Kailua Beach Park right now, and the Kailua Police Department was saying that it's, they both called it a tent and not a tent, and I'm confused by the, this mixed use of the same language. I tried to, you know, on my phone, look up the regulations. The regulations surrounding camping does make it clear that it's to make public parks really accessible to residents and the public at large. That's not currently happening because people are unable to use the permanent gazebo because of people residing there permanently. And however much empathy I have for them, that kind of hits this point where it's a little bit, it's unfair to the rest of the public. And it's also to prevent camping in public parks that are not designated as a campground, and it has a definition of camping, which I would like to read right now. Camp or camping means the use and occupation of a public park as a temporary or permanent dwelling place or sleeping place between the hours of 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And I believe those two locations more than exceed that definition. So I'm also, you know, very concerned to hear the police department be able to make up their own definitions and their own laws and say, well, some of our police officers don't feel that way. And I'm hoping that the mayor will come through with some consistency about policing and enforcement of existing city and county laws.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I know we do have HPD on, and he knows far more than I will ever know about how they handle the situation. I don't know if he has anything to add, but I will pass on what you are saying to the mayor.
Evan Weber.
Yeah, I will just...
Great. Yeah, I will just to add one more thing on that. It's also something that's been raised by some of my constituents. So yeah, I I I believe, I don't know, I haven't spoken with the people there. But I do believe that their stated purpose is like a safe space for people recovering from drug addiction. So if that is what they're actually doing, if something is changed about the place, just making sure that that service can continue, important service can continue for the community somewhere, I think, would be good. And I totally understand all of the things that you're raising as well, Kate. So hopefully we can find a solution that meets all of that. Yeah, mahalo for all the follow up on the inquiries last month and the last couple of months. I appreciate your guys' diligence in following up with us. I'm also going to be diligent in following up about the soap issue. So I hear you about the vandalism. I I've born and raised in Kaileua, seen a lot of it. I get it. I'm looking at a very disturbing racial slur on the wall across from me right now. So definitely a real thing. But I I I believe we can do this. I believe we can fix this. Let's make government work. Let's give the people a win. Let's get some soap in our bathrooms. In, I was just, did a quick Google of vandal proof soap dispensers for public restrooms. And there do seem to be quite a few options. So I know that we're not the only bathroom in Honolulu County that is dealing with this issue. I think people want soap in their bathrooms. I'm stoked that the bathrooms are starting to get cleaned. If we can also clean our hands, I think it'll make our public spaces and quality of life, especially for our keiki and the people who use them most. And people who don't have other options for cleaning themselves, much better. So yeah, if you guys can try to find a solution that works for the whole county, I'm sure it'll mean a lot. It does actually impact people's lives.
Yeah, I agree with you. So I'll pass that on.
Gary Weller? muted Gary.
Hi, Jim knows that my heart and soul is always about Kapahakwari Road. And the grass is over my head again. There's a very dangerous curb now there. And when the transfer trucks come around that curb, if you can't see them coming, and there's one of the homeless people on their bicycles gathering bottles and some citizen going over here. Both sides of that street has retaining ditches in it that is enough to sink a whole car in. And it's not being maintained again. And we're headed towards rainy season and that's going to make it worse. And last night, the white stripe that's down the middle of the road that kind of tells you where the center of the road is, and the two stripes on the side of the road that tells you that you might go off the road into those bodies of water, are so destroyed that you can't even see them. And when it rains, it's even worse. So it's about time a little maintenance is done on that road. The issue is the fact that those transfer trucks are many thousands of tons. They hit a car or a family or they scare a family, you're going to have a serious, serious lawsuit on the city's hand. The second thing is, there's been a mutual agreement of understanding between Alexander Baldwin and the city on the little park that fronts Akahi Shopping Center. I would like to get a copy of that memo of understanding. The reason for that is I want to know what conditions the park is supposed to be kept in.
The one in front of by Starbucks?
Right in front of Starbucks there, that there's a, there's a, a remnant piece of land. And finally, we got some kind of resolve on it with the shopping center being responsible for mowing it. But I don't know if all my responsibilities were covered, such as security, maintenance, the trees, the water system and et cetera. So I'd like to get a copy of the memo of understanding.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Jay La.
I just want to echo Gary on the Kapahakwari Road, sorry. I had to drive home that way several nights over the last two weekends. And there is one section, as you round just past the airfield, and you get into that, what I call where the trees grow over and make that grove. The water that is coming out of, I don't know if it's a natural spring, if it's the ditch, if what, that water floods the road. You cannot see the line. Two different nights, on the six nights I had to drive that road, I almost got hit head on from somebody coming from Makapu. Because I'm assuming they thought they had the road to themselves. You cannot see the lines and you cannot see where the edges of that road are. And thank God I listen to Gary every month because I told my son, dude, put your head out the window and tell me where that line is. I'm not going in a ditch. I drive a skateboard car. So thank you, Gary. And if we could get some maintenance on that road, it'd be really nice. Because it's scary at night with no lights, no lines and bad roads.
Understand, both of you. It is a scary road at night.
Okay, well, I think this is a full plate tonight. Mahalo Shane.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Have a good night. Be safe.
Aloha. Governor Josh Green's representative, Erin Connor.
Good evening. Three things to report on, follow up questions from last month. The first was Chair, your question about that housing shortage number of 50,000. I did find that 2020 to 2025 Hawaii Housing Plan comes up with that number from the Department of Business, Economic Development and Tourism, Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation. So the study was done by a consortium of state and county housing agencies to provide that estimate. I can send you a link to all of that.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
I did, I found it this afternoon right before I came here, so I wasn't able to do that before I got here. But also an update, HHSDC is in the process of updating that study to have a new one. And the results should be available mid to late 2024. So I'll send you that tomorrow morning when I get back to my office. There was a comment about the speed bumps on state roads causing damage to residential houses. HDOT has done vibration studies and utilized consultants to conduct vibration studies to respond to concerns from property owners. I have a little graph that you probably can't see, but the red line here shows the limit. And this is, all the colorful dots in the bottom shows the responses from the study. So HDOT is saying it does not meet the threshold of the vibration sounds put out by the cars in the numerous, numerous studies they've done. However, if property owners have issues currently, they can contact HDOT to come and take measurements. I have an email and a phone number that I will also send you tomorrow morning for residents to reach out to. There was a request for a CIP appropriation, $7.5 million appropriated to Kaileua High School Athletic Facilities in last year's budget. There was a request to see what the status of that is. And unfortunately, we are still waiting for the release of those funds. Maybe a legislator has better updates than I do at this moment. But just a good thing to report, in October, Governor released 4.3 million for predator fencing in Kobainui Marsh. And the project is expected to be completed in December 2027. Those are all of the updates I have for right now.
Questions for Erin, Levani Lipton?
Yes. Aloha Erin.
Good evening.
I have a question specifically for DOH. I was sent by someone who sits on my Water Quality Committee. Surf Rider has a Blue Water Task Force. They do regular water quality sampling. And they took a sample on October 15th for enterococci, or you know, fecal matter. And it was over 300, which was considered high bacterial counts. DOH did not issue an advisory until the 20th of October. Now, I know DOH tests differently. So Blue Water Task Force does this independently with community volunteers and they're on it. They have a good tracking system. I know they send their alerts to DOH. But we have complained in the past of a lag between when the problem is noticed. So they sent out an advisory for brown water and when the public comes to know about it. So I would like to know again, what is the procedure? When do they test? And how quickly do they advise the public that, you know, there's brown water? I also wanted to know what was the cause of this brown water and what was the intervention? Because.
Kaileua Beach?
Kaileua Beach, yeah. And also someone sent me an email saying it said Onella to Kaileua Beach Park, but I think they meant Oniava. So there may have been a typo. So there's a couple of different issues, but mostly, you know, how often are they sampling? How fast do they let the public know? How did they determine what was the cause of this brown water? And a lot of folks were saying that it was kind of sustained over time. And so when the public doesn't know, then, you know, there's all kinds of things that fly around about the cause. And people are very concerned for their health. So if you could just share that with DOH.
We'll absolutely do that.
Right, other questions? Gary Weller? I forgot to take my hand down. Carol Abbe?
Yes, hi. Hopefully I'm on. I I had a question, or maybe it could be updated for the next meeting. I've noticed that the women's correctional facility, the whole Kipah Cottage, looks like it's really, you know, chugging along there. There's so many, so many construction vehicles, of the workers actually. And, you know, I was looking that it might be supposedly done in January 2024, although that's probably not correct. But I was also seeing that. The purpose of that would be that the women prisoners from OCC are going to be moved to the Kaileua Cod Housing. And I was just wondering if you could see, like, are these coming from OCC? Would they be, you know, I don't know how you would word it, but their, their reasons for being in the prison might be of a higher, you know, risk or something? And how many, how many would be moving over to the whole Kipah? So just some research there. It's really like a small village, actually. It would have made a great low income.
I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
As I recall from the briefing we received prior to the construction, this is a year and a half ago, that consolidating all the female inmates at one location was for efficiency reasons. And I don't know that they would necessarily go from OCCC to the cottage. They they would probably be assigned various places within the facility based upon security concerns and things like that. Any other questions?
Oh, I was going to say, but Bill, did you mean located within the facility, that that same facility there?
Yes. You know, they they won't necessarily go from OCCC to the cottage. They'll go to OCCC to the facility and then all the inmates in the facility will be assigned as appropriate.
Okay, well, the facility being the Women's Community Correctional Center in Kaileua.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
My name is Laurel Leslie and I've lived in Kaileua for many years. I represent the Windward Coalition. And we are involved with an issue that was brought up previously. And that issue was testing the water. Our organization is very active in testing the water with a partnership with the Blue Water People. We ask for volunteers and they regularly go out every weekend, namely Sunday morning about 7 o'clock in the morning. And they test all the waters and these volunteers go up the North Shore to test the waters. They also submit their results. We would like to see more immediate notification when there is a brown water alert. Because at many times, our organization has found that the city and county and other areas of responsibility simply don't respond in a timely manner.
Okay. Erin, mahalo. We'll move on to elected official reports and Councilmember Esther Keina. Where's that Pat?
Good evening, everyone. Since I provided an overview on what happened with regard to Bill 6 yesterday, then my report will be fairly short. First off, with regard to those interested, nonprofit organizations in the grants and aid process. The deadline for submissions is November 22nd. And of course, that's around the Thanksgiving holiday. So I ask that anybody who's interested to please start preparing now. And Gloria of my office will be putting it into the chat box. And I did send it to the board chair, so hopefully you all have it and you can send it out to interested stakeholders. Speeding clearly is a big issue. I get a lot of requests for speed bumps, which quite frankly is very difficult. We got speed bumps on Kalamah Street, but it took years. So I've also gotten requests about people wanting in in areas where in the residential neighborhoods, it's 25 miles per hour. They would like it to 15. And unbeknownst to me, I didn't know that the state actually governs the manner of how our city Department of Transportation Services can decrease the speed limit. So I've introduced a resolution 23-271, which would urge the legislature to enact legislation to remove the requirement for the city to conduct an engineering study for reductions of maximum speed limits on city streets. And second, it urges the city's Department of Transportation Services to assess whether maximum speed limits throughout the city's residential area should be lowered from 25 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour. I know that that is a significant reduction and I'm hoping that they can compromise. But any decrease below 25, if residents' sole desire, I think, would be a positive step forward to toward helping with regard to public safety. And I guess, lastly, I wanted to answer Evan raised, the issue of the permitting process. It is something by DPP, it is something that I take seriously, given the fact that I am the Chair of the Planning and the Economy Committee. So just to give you an idea, I will, I will be sending you, I have an update every month. So I will send the latest update to Chair Ahic so he can share it with all of you. So there's some good news and then there's still status quo. The good news is that with regard to the pre-screening process, a year ago, it took six months for the pre-screening process. And we, DPP has whittled down to three days. So that's the good news. The bad news is that, of course, there's an influx of applications in the middle. And that is a critical phase. It's called the code review area. And it's not like they are lacking staff. They are lacking lots of staff to deal with the backlog. Because now the applications are moving, moving quicker once it goes through the pre-screen process. Part of the challenge is the availability of engineers. And so that's something that we're dealing with. So I just wanted to, Evan, I wanted to let you know, it is a priority, not just for the city council, but also for the administration. And so I've been outreach to a lot of experts in the field because they all know it. And I'm thinking, how can we not get retired engineers or former DPP staffers who are familiar with the process? or former DPP staffers who are familiar with the process? And help us deal with the backlog? So we're trying to figure that out. And, uh, but I, I do have confidence that the director, the current director, is doing everything possible so that, uh, it should be, um, you know, it should be, uh, normal. Right now, it's not normal, and it's impacting everybody across the board. And that's my presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Okay, questions for Esther? Online? Doing in the audience? Well, thank you very much, Esther.
Thank you.
Next, Representative Scott Mariachi.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Amazing, no questions for Esther, that's a, would be a first. Uh, so I don't have very many updates today.
This is Chris Lee, make sure everybody asks questions of Scott Mariachi that they're gonna ask of Esther.
Ask, ask me all the easy ones, Chris will be. Uh, I do have one announcement to make. We're having, uh, speaking of Chris Lee, uh, we're having a Little Fire Ant Town Hall on November 29th, um, in Mount Awili, specifically focused on Mount Awili, uh, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Chris and I are going to be sending out a mailer, uh, fairly soon. Uh, my camera's all messed up. Uh, we'll be sending out a mailer soon with the details, um, and the location of the town hall. But I, I, if anyone knows Gail and Ellen, uh, we're gonna use their house, which is kind of in the beginning of the estate section of it. Uh, the reason we're holding a Little Fire Ant Town Hall in Mount Awili specifically is because there are at least three known infection sites, uh, for little fire ants in Mount Awili. So we want to, to gather the community, teach everyone how to spot them, uh, how to test for them, and then how to call and get the free treatment for them, so we can stamp it out in Mount Awili. Now, that being said, a lot of attention has been given to little fire ants lately, especially by your, your Windward legislators. Uh, and, and I'm sorry, Esther Keina is also gonna be a part of the town hall. So thank you to her for, for joining us for that. Um, pretty in, in Mount Awili. But the little fire ant problem is, is pretty widespread, especially on the Windward side. So really, if you do see tiny ants, um, they're, they're much worse than the typical black or red ants uh, that we're used to. I really encourage everyone to try to get them tested. Uh, it's free to, to capture them on little sticks and, and mail them. And the treatment is also free. And they have a, a very low toxicity treatment and, and a non-toxic treatment as well that they can use. So, uh, please call that in if you can. And with that, I'll, I'll wait for the questions.
All right, questions for Scott? Online? Audience? Mahalo, Scott.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Uh, Senator Chris Lee.
Hey, everybody, thanks very much. Um, I wish I could start off by asking Scott questions, but, uh, I guess I'll have to save it for the next person. Um, you know, just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that were brought up. Uh, first, I think, um, you know, Esther had asked, um, or brought up the issue of being able to reduce speed limits. I just wanted to chime in, well, we haven't had this conversation, but I'm actually put in a bill last year, earlier this year, I mean, this past session, um, that we passed out of the Senate, um, to do exactly that. It would have authorized counties to be able to reduce speed limits and authorize DOT, uh, excuse me, more to the point, to be able to reduce speed limits without having to go through, uh, you know, the whole nine yards of doing all these studies and everything in cases where we know it's dangerous, we know it's inappropriate speeds, and they just need to do something about it immediately, uh, before someone else is killed. Um, so definitely gonna be returning to that. So Esther, if you're still there, um, look forward to coordinating, happy to, happy to follow up on that. Um, secondly, um, it's been a busy interim, uh, just generally. Um, I just got back from DC, actually, where I was meeting with the White House and some other stakeholders on, um, uh, clean transportation and electric vehicle charging and, and those sorts of things. Um, and, you know, Hawaii, um, for once, has something great to report. We were one of the first, not one of, we were the first state to draw down on some of the federal, uh, money for EV charging, um, that was provided in the, um, federal, uh, uh, climate. And why am I blanking on it? Excuse me, the IRA and IAJA funding, uh, for EV charging. So, um, our DOT was the first in the country that are rolling out some of the chargers that are in the pipeline right now, uh, along the H1 corridor. And there'll be a lot more to follow up on. Um, I had mentioned, I can't remember if it was Hawaii, Kairoua, Manalo Neighborhood Boards, um, that we would try and get a, a map of kind of where everything's at coming up and where everything's supposed to be going for folks who are interested. So once we get that, I'll be happy to share that here as well. Um, and then, uh, just a couple of days ago, actually, um, uh, hosted, uh, an EV charging summit, uh, at the Capitol, where we got a bunch of stakeholders together, um, on the local end to figure out, all right, how do we make charging more accessible in key areas? Um, particularly places where there's, where there's not access right now for folks who live in multi-unit dwellings and, uh, in Waikiki and other high-density areas. Um, so there'll be some legislation we're looking to put in this year to help address that, which will also concurrently address areas like ours, where you have people living in apartment buildings and things in the middle of Kailua that don't have access to EV charging. And that's relevant, especially now, because, um, nationally, I've been sharing a task force on, uh, transit funding. And one of the key issues we're finding when we met with all the vehicle manufacturers and auto dealers and others on the national level, um, basically every major manufacturer, um, from Ford to GM and so on and so forth, um, is moving to, uh, all-electric vehicles. Um, most of those are gonna be only selling electric vehicles by 2035, which is, you know, basically a decade away. Which means, um, we have to have the EV charging capacity in place, or people are gonna be stuck. Um, so that's, that's, we're sort of on a, a tight timeline. So later on, maybe we can do a separate, um, follow-up on just this when there's time. Um, and then just wanted to wrap up with saying, uh, or thanking, I think, all our colleagues for working on that 4.3 million for the Koinu Marsh funding, um, that, um, was just spoken about, um, by the governor's rep. Um, and thanks to Governor Green for, for releasing that. That's gonna provide the first half of predator fencing around Koinu Marsh to keep out, um, uh, you know, dogs and all the other, uh, pests, so that the birds in the, the marsh will have a chance. And obviously, half a fence isn't gonna stop anything. It, it's helpful, uh, we'll need to work on the funding for the other half. Um, but it's a start. Uh, and then finally, um, just to come back, the Bellows Dunes, or, excuse me, the Bellows Ironwoods, which I think, um, came up earlier in the meeting. I can't remember if Donna asked about that. Um, you know, that's been an ongoing project with the Air Force over there for a number of years now. Um, and I can comment a little bit on it because I've been involved, um, a little bit in the past on that. And basically, it's a dune system restoration project. So, you know, back in the day, all the ironwoods were intentionally planted along there. Um, so the idea was to remove ironwoods kind of in chunks to let the dune system, the natural system there, restore itself and to replant it with all the natives, uh, from Naukau to other sorts of trees and whatnot. But, um, that's really important because without the ability for the sands and the dunes to kind of move naturally, you're gonna end up with erosion problems and all that sort of thing down the road. Um, there is one project we're working on the state side in conjunction with that, which we started. Uh, because that project has actually been pretty successful and some of the watershed restoration adjacent to it, um, and the old streams coming down from the back of Waikiki has been great. It's been challenging because all of those benefits were kind of negated every time there's a heavy rainstorm. And all the dirt and everything from, you know, further up the valley would come down and flood out those areas that are being restored and then pour out into the bay and, uh, muck up all the water. So we're actually, we've been working to, um, identify some land. I think we have some now, um, which DLR is helping us out with, where we're gonna restore, um, Lo'i in that system, which it was all Lo'i, you know, like 200 years ago. And then it turned into rice patties about 100 years ago. Um, and that caught all that sediment coming down. So we're gonna try and, uh, working with our community and, um, other, other organizations, restore some of those Lo'i, so it'll, um, act as a sink for all that sediment coming down, which will allow all the restoration projects along the coastline to, um, be infinitely more successful. So anyway, um, let me just stop talking for a minute. Happy to answer any questions. Um, I know I was joking about throwing all the questions to Scott, but I'm happy to take any, if anybody has any.
Okay, let's load up, uh, Chris with questions. Lavani Lipton.
Yes, quick question. Uh, what are the plans from the state for the disposal of all of the batteries from the electric vehicles that are anticipated? I know this has been an issue that folks are talking about. Um, but electronic waste is something that I'm concerned about. So is there a plan, uh, for how to dispose of the batteries? Or, um, are people thinking about that?
Short answer is yes. Um, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of batteries. Your average EV battery is about like 300 to 400 cellphone batteries. Um, so it's a lot. Um, but the good thing is, once batteries are done being used in EVs, so typically it's when they drop down to like, you know, 80% or 70% of their useful capacity, um, or the cars are just done. Um, they're traditionally being downcycled. So instead of being batteries in a car, you'll take like five-car batteries, stack them into a, a stack, and they become a stationary, um, uh, just regular, like, storage for, uh, buildings and, and that sort of thing, which is actually cheaper than buying brand-new Tesla powerwalls or anything. So, um, you get a whole nother life cycle out of them. And once you go through that several different times, at the end, right now, um, there are, uh, there's sort of a, a supply chain that's recycling, uh, these batteries. And they're able to recover about 95% of all the materials out of the battery and repurpose it into brand-new batteries. So those are all the heavy metals that are really valuable that, you know, we wouldn't wanna extract from the environment brand-new. So there's almost a end-to-end, um, recycling chain that's, that recovers it all. Um, so that's something that is actually in practice, in place right now, particularly in California, um, where, uh, you have most of the, uh, actual plants and that sort of thing doing that work. Um, we actually just had a whole summit on this, um, a separate thing I was, um, participating in, uh, actually in, um, on the mainland, uh, with all the auto manufacturers that are doing that battery production and the companies that are doing that battery recycling, standing that up. So on our side, there'll be basically the same kind of plan, uh, because we're Hawaii and we have to ship everything. That means it's not gonna be as, um, uh, cheap for us, but ultimately, it's still cheaper than throwing batteries away. So that's sort of what's happening right now.
So are we recycling them here locally? Or are we going to have to ship them elsewhere? Because I remember, I didn't wanna throw my lithium batteries in the trash, but I was told that I had to mail them, uh, to the mainland if I wanted to dispose of them properly. So, uh, are we gonna be doing it in-state? Or will we be paying for them to go off-island? So they don't?
I, I assume you're not talking about throwing away car batteries. You're talking about your smaller, uh,
I am, I am. Are we gonna recycle them here? Or they have to go back to the manufacturing plants?
Um, for recycling, they have to go off-island. There's no capacity for that here, of course. The downcycling, though, um, and the reuse of batteries is happening locally. Actually, one of the companies, the chief companies that's now a national company, um, started, um, out of Elemental Accelerator here in Honolulu. And so that whole, that whole element of it, uh, makes a lot more sense for us, which is why it's, it just makes sense because you're just reusing the batteries locally. But once they're done, after like three or four life cycles of being reused, then that has to be shipped off-island for recycling.
Okay. Uh, mahalo, Chris. Next is Representative Lisa Martin. David Ley.
Yeah, sorry, Chris. I, um, wanted to bring up the topic of the little fire ants again and understand or ask you, what, what is the legislator, are, are you guys doing to prevent it, uh, from coming to Oahu in the first place? We, we do understand that the little fire ants are coming across primarily from the nurseries on the Big Island. Um, many different incidents of where that, uh, has occurred. And, um, and I don't see any restrictions on personal travel, people coming from the Big Island, bringing cuttings, flowers, whatever, uh, through an airplane flight and, and bringing the little fire ants over. So I'm just wondering, is there any political will out there to do anything about that? Uh, or is this just gonna be a part of our life, uh, in the, into the future?
I would absolutely, um, fight to the end to make sure this is not part of our regular life in the future. Um, that said, you know, the legislature, there was a study done, I think it was 2014, 2015, um, to look at what it would cost to appropriately deal with all our invasive species at the time. And it was about, uh, $50 million per year that was needed, identified at that time. Um, since then, uh, our invasive species programs have been funded at about, you know, a fifth or a sixth of that amount, roughly. So I think what has been talked about so far from some of our colleagues that I've talked to, is, you know, adequately funding, um, those efforts. So there's positions and there's people to be able to handle these. Because the longer we wait and the, the more there's, uh, the opportunity to expand, the more expensive and the more difficult it's gonna be to stop the problem. Um, that said, uh, you know, the other piece of it is, where's it coming from? As you alluded to, are people flying this stuff in? Um, there have been, just this year, a couple documented cases of nurseries, um, selling infested plants and whatnot, um, even here on the Windward side, um, and doing so knowingly. And coming down hard on those folks to make sure that does not happen is the purview of the Department of Agriculture. And there's been a lot of conversation in the last month or two about, um, making sure that the, the department has the capability and is going to stop those kinds of, um, folks from doing that, where they know that they're selling something that's infested. So that's the other piece of it. And so I think there's gonna be, um, bills both for funding and resources as well as enforcement. And then, of course, assistance to folks who are affected, trying to provide, um, the ongoing outreach that's gonna be needed over the course of a few years to make sure that the problem's properly handled.
Okay, mahalo, Chris. Lisa?
Hello, hi, everybody. Nice to see you here. So, um, one more time talking about little fire ants, because I have been living this. Um, we actually have an infestation on the beach in Lani Kai by the Moku Manu Beach Access, um, along the access itself, as well as four houses going each direction, so a strip of about eight houses, where there are a lot of little fire ants in the foliage. And people are going down there with their kids. Dogs are walking, sniffing around in the foliage, and people don't know. But there's, I was out there this morning, and there's a lot of them. So that is now not just on private property, but that's a public place where people don't know that there's a risk. In Lani Kai, which I feel like is ground zero for LFA right now, there's seven active infestations plus the beach. And four of those are delimited, meaning they know the boundaries and they're under treatment. Three, which is most of the area down low between Mokalua, Ala Pappa, and along those two streets, most of that area, it's just not clear where the boundaries are. And it's definitely not all under treatment. And I just wanted to say how, on the one hand, the treatment is actually quite easy and effective, but getting people, you know, getting a survey in there is really hard. I've been literally going door-to-door, and I never went door-to-door in Lani Kai to campaign. I've been going door-to-door now, just to try to get people to sign up, to provide their, um, I visited Evan. He signed up right away. But to just sign up to give, um, Boy Ant Lab their contact information and permission to come and survey. And there are so many empty houses in Lani Kai, whether it's because they're vacation rentals, or second homes, or under construction. There are so many homes that are not available, um, to speak to anybody. And then other people might have distress to the government. They don't really want people coming in. They're worried about, is the treatment going to, uh, you know, toxic in some way? So this is a huge uphill battle. I just want people to understand that it's something we can fix. We totally can fix it, but it is not easy. People have to be really engaged and talk to their neighbors and be willing to accept the services. Um, I wrote and, you know, introduced a bill last session for funding the little fire ants, because their very skeleton staff, um, was cut further during COVID. So just to restore funding, and that bill, the Senate Canyon, did pass. But there's literally a few people in this staff. So we have somebody, people, they go, we have a meeting, we had a meeting on the 10th in Lani Kai, which a lot of the residents attended, mostly with gray hair, I have to say. Um, but people flew over from other islands to help stop that meeting. Right, it is really a bare, bare-bones crew. They were gonna come and survey this week in Lani Kai. They didn't come because not enough people responded, allowing them to come and survey. So, you know, that's why I started going door-to-door. So it is, it's a big deal. We wanna wipe it out. A puppy, I do not want my puppy to go blind, right? Nobody does. So it's, you know, it's, we keep talking about it. This is a really big deal, and we're at this tipping point where we can wipe them out and eradicate them still, yeah, on Oahu. But if we don't take it seriously, and we don't make the effort to engage our neighbors as only the immediate neighbors can, especially when they're absent neighbors, they might have contact information, et cetera, then we're not going to take care of it. Okay, since the Marines, moving on. Since the Marines didn't show up today, I wanted to mention that I happen to provide to information that they're doing some big training exercises at Bellows. So for people that live in Kailua Hills and Waianae, you will be hearing more explosions and fire, et cetera, all blanks. None of it dangerous, but possibly noisy. And the exercises were from November one to ten, but at Bellows, it's going to be concentrated between November eighth and ten. Eighth, ninth, and ten, it'll be noisy, it'll be daytime and nighttime. They wouldn't tell me how late they'll go, but they did say they are trying not to go late at night. So that is going to be something that is going to impact some people and pets. And we have these interim wildfire working groups at the legislature, and they're on a bunch of different topics. So if there is something that you feel knowledgeable and passionate about, and you want to look at the drafts, they're available online. There's going to be hearings in a couple weeks on each different working group report, and where we will take input to help make them better. And the purpose of those reports is to think about legislation for the next session. And it's not just addressing Maui. Hopefully, a lot of the issues that are in those reports and being considered will be resolved on Maui way before we can pass any legislation next summer. But then we're thinking about how we deal with future fires and future disasters, so that we are better at it. You know, we're faster and more efficient and do a better job. So I would encourage everyone that is on the, you know, you just Google Hawaii State Legislature, go to the House, and it lists all the working groups on there and links to the drafts. And the last thing I wanted to mention, since I am a tree lover, second to the last thing. This coming weekend is Arbor Day in Hawaii, and there is a tree seedling giveaway happening up at the United Methodist Church. And you need to go online first to claim a tree if they're not all gone. Although I do have to say, from being there, they often have extras up there. And so if you go to basically smarttreespacific.org/arborday, you can sign up for your tree. And it's always a really good event, and they have some educational stuff up there as well. Last thing is, there is some chainsawing going on at the future site of the dog park on Hamakua Drive. It is not, we're not getting ready for the dog park yet. It's completely unrelated. We're just harvesting wood to build a hale across the street at Hamakua. There's one more harvest day scheduled in two weeks. That will be the last one. But if anyone wants to come and help us process that wood, you have to take the bark off, and it's actually really fun. You bang on it, or you scrape it, it's right off. It's very satisfying. And we have a community service event this Saturday from four to six PM. Anybody's welcome. If you're just curious to see what's going on back there, just, you don't have to sign up, just come on in. It's just the chain link fence, open gate next to two six eight Hamakua Drive. And I would encourage everybody to be part of this very cool process of building a hale that will be there for our community. With that, I'm.
That's Saturday, four to six.
It's Saturday, four to six, so a day after tomorrow.
Okay.
Which is a nice time to be there. It's not too hot. Obviously, the sun is kind of behind the cloud there.
Questions for Lisa Martin?
I'm just curious about penalties and fines, things that can be just legislated as opposed to having to spend fifty million dollars in the Department of Agriculture, and legislators implement certain penalties for violators that are very well-known and easily identified.
Yeah, I was going to let you relax. I was about to say Jared really wants to answer that question, so I'm going to wait for him to do it. But yes, there are things that aren't being done. Any other questions? If Jared does want to answer.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Representative Natalia Hesse-Burdick, and I think Staff Member Nadia is going to provide the report.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen now.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the new Neighborhood Board member. So Rep couldn't be here today, so I'm here on her behalf. As Chair said, my name is Nadia. I'm Rep's OM. If anyone has ever called the office, you've probably talked to me. Rep wanted to let you all know that the, as Rep Martin mentioned, the working groups draft have come out now, yesterday. The War, the wildfire prevention working group is one that Rep Hesse-Burdick is a member of, and she would really love it if you all could take a look at the draft report and provide any feedback that you have. There will be a public hearing on November seventeenth at ten AM, both in person and online. And with those hearings and feedbacks, that will be incorporated into the final report that will be due on December fifteenth. And it's really easy to find the report. You just go to capital.hawaii.gov/house, and you'll be able to find it like on the first page. And here's also where it is, and then the draft reports. And then it will look something like this, and you can read up on it. There's some great things in there, like discouraging land banking, and there's some things in there that could probably use some more stronger language. So she's really excited to hear what everybody thinks. Yeah, so this is where you can email your written testimony. So typically, when we have a bill that's up for a hearing, there'll be a bill number page on the Capitol website that you can submit testimony. This will be a little bit different. So testimonies will be emailed in, and this is the email they provide. And all of the information on this is also available on that website with the draft underneath. Actually, above it, there'll be instructions on how to submit testimony. And as everyone has been talking about, we, disaster preparedness. Rep just wanted to remind folks that it's still hurricane season. And we've all been talking about the hurricane shelters on the Windward side. So the legislature had funded six million dollars to DAGs to retrofit the shelters on Oahu all over. So the DAGs has the funding, the Haime is the one that selects the buildings to be retrofitted. Both Rep Hesse-Burdick and this board has requested for windmill shelters to be placed, and I'm sure other reps have as well. And as part of the disaster preparedness, she wanted to remind folks to prepare personally, have fourteen days worth of food and water and medicine and any other provisions that you might need handy at home. And we will have a site visit at the WCC or WCCC on November twenty-eighth, and we'll be providing a report on that in the next board meeting. And as is in everybody's mind, the little fire ants and all the invasives that we're getting currently, we are also planning on a virtual town hall meeting for this. Every time we've got, gone to the, as you know, a lot of the, there's been a lot of town halls on this subject on the Windward side. Every time Rep has gone to one of those, she's been getting questions of how to make it more accessible to people who can't be there in person. So we're trying to meet that need as well. So we'll be sending out the dates. So be taking place early December. And we're collaborating with other representatives, and we'll be sending out the notices of the date once we have them nailed down. And then, oh, just before we started with this neighborhood board meeting, we got an update on the Oniava Sewer Project. They're planning to begin work again on November seventh, weather permitting, and they'll be doing two nights of exploratory work that evening. And yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and I'll take any back to the rep.
Okay, any questions for Nadia? Okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Senator Jarrett Aho Kaloli.
Hello, Chair, members of the community. Sorry to Representative Martin, I got overexcited by David's question because there's actually some action that I would like to propose that the Neighborhood Board potentially take up relating to enforcement and accountability regarding the commercial spread of invasive pests that are listed as invasive by the Department of Agriculture. The Department of Agriculture is currently, has been engaged in an administrative rulemaking process because the legislature mandated that the Department of Agriculture address and work to stop the spread of invasive pests throughout the islands. The Department of Agriculture was given the authority to enact administrative rules that they can use to address each infestation and enforcement and accountability in the industry more appropriately. So administrative rules are usually used for things like setting fine amounts because it's difficult to get those types of measures updated in the, through the legislative process in regular intervals. You know, if the bill falls apart for whatever reason, your one shot's over and you have to try again next year. Whereas with rules, it's sort of an ongoing process. There are no deadlines. We've been meeting since June with the Department of Agriculture. They are currently refusing to take the rules package to public hearings. The rules principally authorize the Department of Agriculture to do two things. One is to quarantine invested plant, infested plant product material that are on the property of commercial entities that are knowingly housing that infested plant material and have also refused to accept the voluntary and subsidized invasive species community support, like, like some of the Rikers Trent Nursery owners that we know are present in the Waianae community who have refused to participate with the ant lab, who have volunteered to come on to their property, do the surveying and engage in the treatment regimes. Currently, the Department of Agriculture's position is, even though there's a legislative mandate, they, they haven't enacted the administrative rules to give them the power to quarantine those products and then to forcibly treat them according to whatever the best management practices are. They are now also refusing to take the, those, that rules package to public hearing. We received a letter, which I'm happy to share with the board, last week from the Department of Agriculture, asking for clarification on this process. They said they met with the nursery industry last month, which is a normal part of the administrative rulemaking process, is community consultation. And the quote from the letter was that the Hawaii Nursery Association considered quarantine of commercial products a deal breaker. And so as a result of that posture, the Department of Agriculture is now elected to stop the rulemaking process and is refusing to go to public hearing. So I'm happy to send all this information, including the rulemaking package, to the board and also to the Waianae Neighborhood Board and the Kanioehe and Kahaluu Neighborhood Boards, and really everybody up the coast. And I would ask you to consider taking some sort of action, to call on the Department of Agriculture to take the rules to public hearing and to reconsider their position. I have obtained the agreement of the Senate Ag Chair earlier this afternoon to conduct an informational briefing on this. And we've also asked for time with the governor. So this is not okay.
Excuse me for a second, Gary Weller. Would a Community and Government Engagement Committee be willing to take this up at your next meeting in November?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so added to the Community and Government Engagement Committee agenda for the third Tuesday in November, and I look forward to your email.
Thank you. That's why I was a little worked up about the very timely and appropriate question. I spoke with a member of the governor's administration this afternoon on this. I have DOT road updates. We had a town hall in Kanioehe, and I spoke to the DOT Director on Monday. Polyhighways is, the Polyhighway paving project, the paving is over. The only remaining work to be done is striping. That's going to proceed into, should be done by the end of the year. Hopefully, if the weather permits. The Olamana Community Association is hosting a, a meeting, I believe, next week to address concerns that the speed tables that were put in on Kalanianoole between the Olamana subdivision and the women's are insufficient. I guess there were, there have been additional accidents. The DOT's proposal as of right now is basically to put in additional, not to put in a stoplight. I, I also have some concerns about putting a stoplight in over there. But to do some additional safety improvements and traffic flow adjustments in order to address it. We did receive a community, several community requests about Mukapu Boulevard. I don't have the institutional memory that this body has, but the proposals were essentially to request that the Department of Transportation eliminate one of the two lanes and then go to bike lanes. I, I did put that request into Ed Sniffin and asked that he pull up the engineering, the engineering reporting on traffic flow. So, okay, so, but my understanding is that there may have been requests in the past from Oniava to Aikahi that traffic flow be restricted in that area. And so if the answer is no, that's helpful information for me. But I did get that community request, so I'm noting it to the board. And then.
Jared?
The, the board input on a complete streets proposal for adding bicycle lanes to Oniava was that Oniava is too narrow and, and too heavily laden with vehicular traffic.
Oh, yeah, not Oniava.
No, Mukapu.
Mukapu Boulevard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But Jared, I thought Mukapu had bike lanes, or is it just that it's striped for parking?
It's got super wide shoulders. I bike on it all the time. It feels pretty safe.
Specifically, the neighborhood request that I received, more than one, was to eliminate the two lanes and go down to one. Okay? And in one of the follow-up conversations that I had, I guess in the past, there may have been a proposal that came before this board, but I don't know because it definitely was before my time.
It, it has not come to this board since two thousand eleven.
Okay, thank you. Budget, infrastructure, lights. Sorry?
Bill, can I speak to Jared?
Go ahead.
Jared, the Mukapu Boulevard is a very interesting road, and you should do your research on it. The reason it's so wide is so that if Kanioehe Marine Base needed to evacuate the Marine Corps base and move in very large military equipment, that road was designed to accommodate them. So I think you need to do a little homework on Mukapu Boulevard and why it's so wide and has two lanes. Because in my district, I don't think anybody would tolerate that being turned into one lane on each side.
That was one of our constituents on, well, it was several. Actually, I, I can connect them. I, at this point, what we've asked the Department of Transportation to do is to go get us some traffic flow data because they were initially reticent to pursue something like that. So.
Thank you.
That was a little itchy. I'd like to change the subject. If you Google HHFDC housing study, then you can get the housing data that was spoken about earlier. They do include a pretty substantial report that includes the methodology on how they came up with the fifty thousand unit shortage. They break it down by island. They break it down by area median income category, each of the different area median income levels. So it's a pretty data-intensive study, but I'd encourage you all to take a look at it. Red Hill, I'm involved in Red Hill. We had a briefing today on defueling broadband. Like, on Maui, I, I'm Commerce, so utilities, the third-party investigation, insurance, financing, licensing. Happy to talk about any of that stuff. And we have two Supreme Court justices that are up for confirmation on the seventeenth. If you're interested, I'd encourage you to follow along. Ms. Maria Tijerina once joined our meeting and had questions for me as a result of a prior Supreme Court confirmation. So I'm just putting that on everyone's radar. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Questions for, yes, LA N. Questions for, yes, Kellyanne?
For the Department of Agriculture Administrative Rules, do you know if the board would be able to petition them to pursue rulemaking? Like, is that something we can do? Or would it just be like, we should write a letter?
I'm not sure what the specific board action would be that's the most appropriate. We can follow back up on it. I think the first thing that came to mind after the question from Mr. Laia was a statement from the board requesting that the rules be taken to public hearing, which is the next step in the process that needs to be taken, that the department is refusing to take, might be the most appropriate at this point.
Okay, other questions? David Laia?
First of all, I just want to say thank you. And I'm confused, though. What is the basis that the Department of Agriculture is citing for their refusal to bring this to public hearing?
I got to tell you, I don't understand it. It's been very frustrating. It's been very frustrating. The, we've been given a series of conflicting excuses since we started really, really actively engaging on the little fire ant issue in the early summer. Essentially, the Department of Agriculture, and Rep Martin, you know, has explained this really better than me. I mean, she explained it well, which is, you know, that department is traditionally was designed to help small farmers take their crops to market. And so they are, they have a very poor track record of enforcement. And we need to do a better job of holding them accountable of their responsibilities. So at this point, I don't see and have not understood a reason why we shouldn't proceed with the rules because they are still discretionary. They are intended to be utilized by the department only when they are dealing with recalcitrant nurseries and plant industry owners who are refusing to accept government subsidized surveys and treatments of listed, Department of Agriculture-listed invasive pests. So there are rules in place already to stop the movement of products between islands. But these specific rules that are being addressed right now are, need, according to the department, need to be enacted to authorize them to take action on the intra-island, which is anywhere on the island, spread of the pests.
Okay. Go ahead.
Relationship that DOA has with nurseries or farmers, not just on this issue, but on other issues that I've tried to work on in the past, is a very much client relationship. So they have traditionally viewed nurseries and other farm leaseholders as clients whom they serve. And they don't want to alienate them. That is, that is the feeling that I get from their behavior.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got six items left on our agenda in four minutes. So mahalo. Thank you. Reports from members who attended other meetings. I attended a meeting with Andrew Juano, Director of Department of Budget and Fiscal Services. This is on the land values for property tax assessments. And we will look forward to receiving a presentation from them in the coming months. Are there any other reports from members who have attended meetings? Okay, next item of business, approval of minutes. Any corrections to the October 5 minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Committee reports. Would any committee chair wish to amplify on their report? Otherwise, reports will stand as submitted. All right, committee membership motions. Changes to committee membership. I understand that Melina Kalukui will be stepping down from the homeless in Kai Lewis Subcommittee. And Evan Weber, I understand you're stepping down from Planning, Zoning, and Environment.
We're actually put on it somehow. So I'm not technically stepping down, but.
Oh, I think, I think it was approved two months ago.
Yeah, I thought so too. But apparently Donna said that it wasn't showing up in her records, so.
Oh, it was in the minutes, but we'll correct that now. So Evan stepping down from PZNE, Melina stepping down from Homeless. Any other changes to committee memberships? Okay, that has to be approved by the board. Are there any objections to these changes to committee membership? Hearing none, approved by unanimous consent. Chair's report, committee agendas for December are due by Sunday, November 26. We'd hope to be shifted to the multipurpose room. But Zumba Group has use of it on Thursdays until the end of the year. So we will shift into it for our February meeting. But because we're here and not there, our traditional Christmas potluck is just too hard to do at this location. So we're going to pass on that this year and look forward to it next year. Are there any other items? All right, this meeting stands adjourned at 9:58.